Welcome this evening to the Concord School Committee. I would like to call the Concord School Committee to order. And I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session. If someone could read that motion language.
I'll be happy to. I move that the Concord School Committee enter into executive session under purpose three of the open meeting law to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Concord Teachers Association and return to open session.
Second, all in, we will roll call. So Anderson, I.
Luther, I.
Randy, I.
Rank and I.
Okay, and I want to note to people, we don't have anyone in the audience in the building, but to those of you online, we do expect our executive session to be at an absolute minimum thirty minutes, but closer probably to a full sixty. So we will see you back here in that time. So in which case we'll adjourn to our executive session room and see everyone back here sometime between five thirty and more likely closer to six. Thank you. All right. Welcome back everyone to our Concord School Committee meeting. And welcome to our Willard's first graders. You guys are so big. I can't believe that's first grade. I was going to say third grade. Anyway, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Hunter to introduce our Willard first graders and maybe Mr. Lucy over there.
Yeah, I think I'm going to quickly turn over to Mr. Lucy. We're really excited to have Mr. Fiandaka's first grade class here. And I think they're going to give you a little taste of responsive classroom. So I'll let Mr. Lucy take it from there.
Super. So thank you to Mr. Fiandaka and the students and the adults who came tonight. So responsive classroom, as you remember. Mike. Oh, yep, I got you. Yeah.
I knew that was coming.
Can take it off.
You can pull it off.
You can pull it off and walk around.
How's that?
Yeah.
Oh, there you go. So responsive classroom is about how we build culture within the classroom. And then we use flag five as the curriculum. Thank you to all of you for supporting it in the budget. Thanks to Kristen Anderson and the team of scores of members of the community and teachers who selected the curriculum. And thank you to the Concord Ed Fund who additionally made a contribution to the training so we could come up to speed more quickly. At Willard, we now have more than three quarters of our classroom staff who have been trained and greater than seventy-five percent of all the of the teachers trained. So including special subject teachers and others. So what you'll see tonight is Mr. Fiandaka and his class and what they do every day to build classroom community. And and during times in which they need a little shakeup, they do so. That activates the brain. Mr. Fiandaka, to you.
Thank you.
It is on.
It's on.
So yeah, I mean, Mr. Lucy just sort of explained everything. But we're going to start, we're going to just show you how we start every day with sending the ball around the circle. And then we'll do a shakedown after that. So just pretend you're a fly on the wall of our classroom. Let's circle it up, friends. I also brought my son here who goes to Bolton Books. Imogen, how do you want to do this? Do you want, would you like to roll or bounce? Bounce. All right, so, Andrew.
Now, it's quick.
Evening, Livy.
Evening, Mr. Fiandaka.
Why is that?
Good.
Good.
He's saying, Dad, how you doing today? I'm eating, love, and you're playing, Dad. I have to play another part. Have a good day.
Oh. Great. And so, all right. For your benefit, I'll ask the class again. For everyone's benefit, I asked you all this this morning, and then I just asked you again outside. But you answered it perfectly this morning. Why do we do this every day? Why do we start our day like this? Mia. Yeah. Yeah. Got it? Livy?
If you're not going to give them the microphone.
Oh, sorry, sure. Sorry about that.
Because we want to be kind. We want to say good morning, and we don't want to forget other people's names. To get ready to learn.
Will?
And so everyone can get ready for the day.
What's important that we do while we're doing.
To put your head in the game.
Yeah.
And to make eye contact.
Milo, did you want to add something as a guest student?
Have fun.
All right, so that's how we start our day. And so this next one is an energizer. And so I invite you to stand up and do it with us if you are so interested. It requires some body movement. You ready? During the day, why would you have an energizer?
Oh, lots of different reasons. But sometimes when you're transitioning from one part of the day to the next, you need to move your body and sort of wake up your brain and give yourself a little bit of a physical and mental reset. And you do do that often. We're going to do a shakedown. Who can tell us about a shakedown? Yes. How many moves on the first one? Eight. Then we do half that. So how many moves after that? Then we do half that. How many after that? And then half that. And then what at the end? Okay. Okay. And why is this so important? Yes. What does that mean? Kids are ready to learn. Okay, ready?
Please do the shakedown with us. It's typically very fast, but we'll give you, we'll give you a slow one.
And then we'll do a fast one.
Two shakedowns. All right, you ready? Shakedown? A little slower, right? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. 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 One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. One, two, one, two, one, two, one, two, one, 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 one. Yeah. That was, that looks like a second here. Going to hit the toss, going to hit the nitro. Are you ready? Ready, everyone? Yeah. Make sure you have space. Let's go. Day in the life.
Questions, comments?
Carmen.
So that is one of a few that we do. Yeah. Great curriculum. Great management protocol. I'm a little out of breath.
Question from the committee. So again, so if you were to walk through the halls of, I'm sorry, thank you. If you were to walk through the halls of Willard or of Alcott or Thoreau, you'd see this occurring in each of the classrooms. And it would look slightly different, K through five. But this type of building of relationships occurs every day and affirmed every day. And the science behind it and the evidence behind it leads to greater classroom community and learning. And then we overlay it with our social emotional learning. So we're really paying a great deal of attention to the needs of the students. If they are prepared to learn, they are more likely to learn. So thank you to Tony and the rest of the staff at Willard and across the district for investing so deeply in this. And again, thank you for supporting it. And thank you, parents, for being here tonight. Thank you so much, Aaron. Yeah, yeah. Are you ready to learn? Of course.
Guys, for making us ready to learn. We have a lot to do here at our meeting.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Yeah, please, yes. Thank you, folks.
Up and on, yeah.
Say, thank you.
Thank you, first lady. Bye.
I feel so honored.
Thank you, Mr. Lucy.
Thank you so much.
It was great.
Come by Willard any day, it's a blast.
We're going to be one of those about nine PM. We'll do our shakeout at nine. Schedule it. Schedule it now. All right. All right, so moving into our business meeting. So the first thing that I wanted to do was potentially share, not potentially, share with everybody the names that we received as part of our public outreach in looking for suggestions for names for the middle school. I said actually in our chairs, we have a chairs meeting once a month in, for all the different town committees. And I think the way I put it was Concord's going to Concord. Concord is really a place where civic engagement is still strong. And I think the outreach that we've received in these past two weeks really demonstrates that. So up on the screen are the unique names that we received. I will just read them all because should go in the public record, even though obviously they're here. So the first one is the Sarah Alden Bradford Middle School. The Mary Merrick Brooks Middle School. The Peter Buckley Middle School. The Concord Middle School. Simon Davis Middle School. The Emerson Middle School. There were two submissions, same name, two submissions honoring two different Emersons that have lived in Concord. The Margaret Fuller Middle School. The Ellen Garrison Middle School. The Garrison Peabody-Sanborn Middle School. The Kearns-Goodwin Middle School. Hawthorne Middle School. The Hudner-Brown Middle School. The Thomas J. Hudner Middle School. Mary Mann Middle School. The Jerry Moss Middle School. The Mesketequid School. The Peabody Middle School. The Peabody-Sanborn Middle School. The Dr. Isaiah L. Pickard Middle School. The Mary Rice Middle School. The Sanborn Middle School. And I believe actually it should write the Dr. Charles Willie. And I did Charlie's, it should be Charles Willie Middle School. So those are the names that we've received. I did share this list today with the Concord Bridge so that they will be publishing the names. I also, they've asked for some of the submissions because there was, you know, some, some meat to a lot of these. So I will be sharing the different stories and rationales that our citizens have presented to us in consideration of these names. This will be going to the town as well. I didn't have the opportunity to do that today. It's nice. I take my son to the doctor in the afternoon. So I assume too, as part of our communications plan, that you will also be sending these names out to the school community. As we mentioned, we're going to try to leverage all the levers that we have to ensure that these names are out there. We are going to have a quick discussion on this because I have, and you'll have seen in the agenda overview, I had some ideas that I wanted to float with you guys. But at this time, I think we can move to public comment. So I do want to note, public comment, you always are the one that says this, is.
Do you want me to say it again?
Yes.
Okay, public comment period will be twenty minutes. This is a meeting in the public and not with the public. You'll have three minutes. So if you can state your name before your three minutes are up, and I will be keeping the timer today, which you usually do that. We will start in the room and then we will go to Zoom and we'll alternate back and forth. If you are on Zoom and you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature.
You're good at that. You're great at that. So I do have one submission in the room, so I'll start there. Mr. Plobo.
And on behalf of myself and the Robbins House, I just wanted to tell you a little story. It's awesome what you've done, you've opened up this process. I want to tell you the story of a little school in the center of town called Concord Center School in September in eighteen thirty-five. September eighteen thirty-five, the teacher said to her class, who wants to march in the parade? And all the kids raised their hand, except one. One little girl didn't raise their hand. The teacher said to her, Ellen, why aren't you raising your hand? She said, well, my mom, my mother says, I can't march to any more parades. I marched in the July Fourth Parade, I got crowded out, got pushed, I got shoved, I had name called. My mom says, no more, I cannot be in parades. So the teacher sort of seemed to understand. And another student in class said, Ellen, I'll march with you. And we don't know how it happened, but we know that she convinced her mom to let her march in the parade. So in the September twelfth, eighteen thirty-five parade, Ellen Garrison marched through the center of the town, the only black child marching in that parade, holding the hand of a classmate. And it was reported in the paper that they described her walk through the town as beneath the gaze of curiosity, surprise, admiration, and ridicule of the town. So that tells us something about Ellen Garrison as a twelve-year-old. I think in the work that you do, you talk a lot about upstanders. She was like the classic upstander from the very beginning, willing to walk through this town. And then she graduated from Concord Public Schools, well documented, lots of references, went to Boston, decided she wanted to become an educator. So she's an upstander and she's an educator. She wanted to work at the Freedman Schools. Freedman Schools are schools that were set up after the, during the Civil War to help educate recently emancipated black men and women. Ellen worked in those schools. She went down to Baltimore. Lot of great difficulty. It's some, she's got some great quotes about needing books and needing desks. No similar, no different than a lot of educators today are always talking about the resources we need. She was brave to go down there. She faced harassment on the streets, name calling, things thrown at her. Her children faced the same, but she felt like it was her duty to do this for herself and her country. A real sense of patriotism, I think, and a real sense of kind of American values. Then in eighteen sixty-six, Congress passed the first Civil Rights Act. A lot of us don't know, there was a Civil Rights Act in eighteen sixty-six that integrated public spaces. So her and other teachers said, well, we're going to, they passed this law, we're going to try it out. So they sat in a white-only waiting area, a women's waiting area in Baltimore, promptly got thrown out, forcibly thrown out, violently thrown out. She went to her boss, she said, what, I thought we have this law now. He says, you have to go back, go back again and get witnesses. So they went back in a second time with the fear of getting thrown out a second time. They got their witnesses, they brought it to court, went to, worked its way up. Railroad company tried to settle because they knew they were wrong. They tried to pay them four hundred dollars to drop the case. They wouldn't, went all the way to the Maryland State Superior Court. And then it was dismissed. You don't know why it was dismissed. We haven't been able to figure that out. But the point is, in eighteen sixty-six, Ellen was one of the first women of color to be bringing suits to test the eighteen sixty-six Civil Rights Act, which was later overturned by the Supreme Court. We know it wasn't until the fifties in Rosa Parks that this happened yet again. And just to.
I don't know, I'm so sorry.
Sure, just to close up. When Rosa Parks case was, her lawyers were looking for case law. We have evidence that they went back to Ellen's case to look for it. So just thanks so much for opening this process. Ellen Garrison is an upstander, she's an educator. She's brave and she really stands for democracy and a patriot that we deserve to have in this town. Thank you so very much.
Looking into Zoom. If anyone is interested to speak, I need to see a raise hand in your individual box. Seeing none, we will close public comment for the evening. All right, so moving on to our business. I did want to chat with you all about some ideas. So, you know, it was funny, I was, before we started this public process, I had looked at other schools and who had recently engaged and embarked on similar processes. And I, and in all of them, they had just like we, dozens of submissions. And I thought, I doubt that's going to happen here. I don't know why I thought that. But in light of the fact, and I do want to chat about this with all of you, I'm, that we've received so many. I'm wondering if it might make sense for us to extend the, the public comment period for an additional two weeks. And my rationale, I guess, is this. The public is seeing for the first time tonight or when the, the town shares their social media and we share ours and it goes to the bridge, a lot of these names for the first time. And do we think there's a value in allowing the public, after seeing those names, have the opportunity to weigh in? And again, I'm throwing this out there, in which case, if we were to do that, that would change our schedule a little bit. So the initial schedule that we had put forth was that we were going to receive names through today, allow two weeks of public comment from now, January twenty-third through February twenty, through February sixth. And at our February sixth meeting, we would, you know, begin our deliberations and ultimately select a name for the school. What I'm wondering is, because we've had so many names, would it make sense to, like, almost narrow down this big list into three or four finalists? We've seen in other schools, that does seem to be common. You know, we've, we've searched around at, at different meetings, watching different meetings. So that's, that's, that is an option for us. In which case, then we would not vote until February twenty-seventh. So I wanted to put that out there to all of you before making a decision to sort of hear what you guys think. So what do you think?
Could you speak to the, the question that I've heard from some people as to whether this is just a straight-up referendum on the part of anybody who wants to participate?
What do you mean?
Are we going to actually count votes?
Well, I don't think so.
But that's what some people think. Are you aware of that?
You mean of the emails?
Yeah.
Is a vote?
I mean, some of them refer to it that way, and I've had that on the street as well.
Yeah.
People unclear about our process.
No, I mean, I think, yeah, so the, the way I read the policy and mass general law would be the decision is ours to make. And, you know, I would say the majority of folks are looking for public input, as we would with anything. You know, we take public comment on matters with respect to curriculum, our own policies, but ultimately the decision is ours.
I know that.
Yeah, so.
I'm curious about this process.
I would think it would be no different than any other.
Fairness is important.
Yeah. It would be no different than any other process where we take public input.
So Alexa, are you looking to have like two weeks of public comment then, February sixth, is it?
February sixth would be sort of.
Narrow it down?
Yes, and I would want that to be done after the extended public comment period or hearing. So, and, and I think, you know, we talk a lot about words that matter. So, you know, I'm actually more comfortable using the word hearing only because in that February sixth designation of forty minutes or, we wouldn't be accepting public comment in that time period, for example, on solar, on, you know, the cell phone tower. So we would restrict in the Concord meeting, public comment just to this. So that we would be, we would give ample time for constituents to, to be heard live in addition to the emails. And then we would, after that, sort of deliberate, again, and this is just a proposal, deliberate narrowing down this list, because the list is really extensive. I'm sorry?
February sixth.
On February sixth, narrowing down the list. Again, and then allowing another two weeks for people to weigh in via email and via public comment. I would do the same thing on February twenty-seventh, do public comment in the CM CPS meeting, restricted to this topic. We would allow public comment on other things in the joint meeting. And then on the twenty-seventh would be the vote. No, maybe this isn't necessary. Again, I just wanted to run it by you. We can absolutely stick to the original schedule. Maybe this idea of narrowing down a large list isn't necessary. I don't, I don't know, but I, I was curious about perspective, if anyone had it.
Do you have an idea how you're going to shrink down the list?
I think by talking, you know, I think that, my guess is that some individuals will have, I think some of these stories are going to resonate with us as individuals, right? And I would, I would, I would entertain motions to advance some, one of these suggestions to finalists. So I think it would be done sort of that way. We'd, we'd, I think people can advocate for a story or a name that resonates with them and, and we'd sort of go from there.
You have a number you're looking for?
I was, in the, yeah, oh, I said maybe three to four. I, you know, I don't want it to, you know, we have twenty-two-ish submissions. I don't want to do ten. That's a lot, you know.
I feel like I watched a school committee meeting, because I, I watch random school committee meetings in my spare time. And you can watch other school committees go through this process and what they've done. And sometimes they go right down to the five in that first meeting. They take the vote that night and that's it. You know, I think we've really extended our comment period and we're looking for as much feedback as we can. So I think we should pick a number, maybe, to go to the finalists. And then it's really, do we want to vote on the sixth? Or do you want to give the public two more weeks with whatever the finalists are? And then vote on, would you say, the twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
The twenty-seventh.
So what would be the criteria to pick the names? What are you looking for? You know, the gentleman who spoke a second ago, you know, he spoke on an individual who is part of Concord, has history with Concord. Is that something that this body is looking to do or is it just randomly?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the sort of, the, the common thread of almost all of these names is they are all Concord residents at one time or another in their lives. With the exception of the superintendent's recommendation, which is to keep a Concord Middle School named after no one but, you know, the, the town itself. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't. Without getting into too much deliberation itself, your question, I think, is a tricky one because I don't want to be essentially ranking Concord citizens, past and present. But I do think I want the opportunity, again, if we want, and maybe we don't want, maybe we don't need the narrowing down. That's what I want to know from you all. But I do think there's opportunity to narrow it down if that helps our process. But I do think there's opportunity to narrow it down if that helps our process. But again, I think, I don't think we should have criteria that seems, seems sort of antithetical to everything sort of that we talk about. That I don't, I don't want to say, well, this person needs to be, you know, this good or this virtuous or, you know, all of these things are such intangibles. You know, I don't want to say this person needs to have made six, you know, significant contributions in their life. So I think, again, it's gonna be more nebulous than that. It's gonna be more iterative and conversational, rather than have, you know, boxes that we check. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense, but in my thinking, you know, this is a school that's gonna be here for the next 100 years. And the name is gonna be important because then it's something that you're teaching the students who entered the building, why the school was named versus, we picked the name because this is the name that we felt we liked. Versus, here's a history to the name that they can go back and actually dig up and say, hey, you know, this person made a huge impact, not only for Concord, but for the folks outside of Concord. So, and in my thinking, that would be something that would be very impactful, not only for the town of Concord, but for the folks outside the city.
And I think that's the kind of thing we'll talk about. And I think that in our individual motions, you know, that would be part of the discussion. So, here.
My, um, my, I, I think time is great. My only hesitation to changing the process at this point is that we've, there's been, there, I think there's been a big gray area around how we're handling this. And I would hate to, like, muddy it further by changing it again.
Yep.
And I, I was just went back into the Concord Bridge to see what has been published, because I, and it-
And, yeah, they've published our original timeline.
Which is not inconsistent with what you're suggesting, because it says we would have a 40-minute public comment period during, on February 6th. And it says we may vote that evening. It doesn't say we will. So there is, like, wiggle room to, I just, I almost think that we're better off sticking with what we suggested and learning from this and doing it differently in next time.
Yeah. When we build a fourth elementary school, go, please.
Not our, our committee problem, and actually sticking to the timeline that we suggested. That's my, I'm-
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So I guess the big question is, to your point, do we think we'll get a better outcome by narrowing it down? What do people think? I can't really, I can't say one way.
I can't say we will either, but again, what I want to do is to ensure that work, you know, we're being as inclusive and giving people as much opportunity as possible and-
Which I think.
I, and it demonstrates that we have.
Emails about this. We've gotten 22 different suggestions. I think that that in and of itself says that, yeah, that people are really invested, engaged, and care a lot about this. And, and have, there's been a lot of, I think, to your credit, to Dr. Hunter's credit, to the bridge, like, there's been a lot of publicity around how to get your, your opinion.
No doubt. I think that, yeah, the, the actions speak louder than the words and that results are, speak for themselves.
Go back to what you think would happen on, if we don't narrow them down. Are we going to-
Then, for the original, the original timeline that I worked out with the MAS C, it would be that on February 6th, we would hold the hearing. And then after that hearing, you know, similar to how we did the budget, we would deliberate and, and name the building.
And you don't think we would go through every single nomination? That's the only-
Well, what if, what if we, what if we took, so, because we have 22. And people really, they spent time with their words. It was, it actually was very touching to read all of them. I really feel like when you read all of them and you read someone else's words talking about each individual, it's important. So what I think we should do, and I might be throwing like a wrench in the whole system. But I do think if we could get that out there publicly, kind of put the name, you know, in other districts, I've seen them like, you know, they, they publicize it somehow on their website. But we could take people's words with the name and attach it maybe to our agenda so that everyone can see the words that we also saw.
Well, that should happen soon.
Yes, and so the, the bridge, I wish I could say the bridge is in receipt of that, the email that I, so the bridge asked for that. Can we see the, the, you know, the meat and the potatoes, the words, the, that, that are so compelling? So the bridge is gonna receive that. They know that it's coming. I was, I spoke with Jen Paluzzi today. I think Kelly is on the meeting this evening. So I've put all of that together again, but my son has all these warts, so I was at the doctor with him. I couldn't finish it before the meeting, but I had every intention of doing that, but I couldn't. So Jen knows that that is coming likely from me this evening, teed up for them to publish. Hopefully, they can publish it online before the print. Oh, absolutely, yes. So we could easily put those, maybe clickable, on each submission with the word-
The list you put up.
Yeah.
Then-
And just link it, yeah, like, perfect.
We would have to do some work on that. Maybe all of us could take a few and kind of put it into it.
Well, I have them all cut and pasted. I have that done, that is done. I've taken the words from the emails and done that, so-
Do a separate, if you're gonna do Google Drive, do a separate public Google Drive, don't-
PDF, or just make a PDF.
Okay.
Are people gonna see what was submitted or what somebody has finessed and must-
No, I, to the bridge, I said we have cut and paste verbatim, including like-
But cut and paste and verbatim are two different things. Cut and, you, cut and paste everything?
No, make a PDF out of every email.
Yes.
So they're, they're unvarnished?
Exactly, yes. Yes, yeah, so I did not editorialize or edit in anything that I will be sending to the bridge. It was taking each submission as it, as they came. You know, and, and, and there were, there were varying degrees of them. And so what I, I, and I'm not gonna do, I don't want to say, the bridge does not, I don't think, have any interest. I think there are 194 emails. We won't be sending every email. We're gonna do the ones that really gave the meat and potatoes. Like I would use, for example, I hope Joe's email on Ellen Garrison. I would use the superintendent, Hunter's email on CMS. There were really not-
If there's a nomination, there has to be an email attached.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right. So in some, like, so like, you know, some make statements that why they're in favor of one or another, but we'll be submitting one for each name.
Do we, do we then bias the process by having one of us on this committee select certain ones?
We put everything out there, that's my first-
The public will see and the majority of they won't.
Every email out there.
I'm pretty uncomfortable with that.
Okay.
If we want to keep this process pure.
Sure.
We gotta keep it pure. And that isn't being selective about what we disseminate.
Especially if we've gotten multiple emails, you know what I'm saying? We can't say, oh, this one was, made a better statement than that one.
Sure.
And to add to the complications, you, you offered up one, Tracy, here's another one. You said, I, I think it was the chair, decided today was the cutoff date. But nobody can prevent a citizen from sending something to us tomorrow. So is the assumption that that might or might not influence individuals around the table, but it wouldn't be part of the formal collection of documents?
I think so, yeah, I think we made clear the deadline.
Deadline.
Just want to make it clear to everybody what's going on here.
Yeah, 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 but that was very clear, I think, in the process, that there would be a deadline. And then at this point, we will pivot to the end quote period.
Question's still gonna come up, what about, I, I'm interested now-
We'll read anything, yeah, but we'll read anything.
I understand. I just think it needs to be publicly stated that it's, of course, we read it. We're not gonna put up a firewall on it, but it's not gonna fall into this list.
This view list, yeah, it won't be the list of-
Each to be made known, that's what's happening.
Yeah. We did, in fact, there's a case study, we did receive something at three hours after the deadline that is not on this list. So, we've already got our case study, so of course, we've received it, of course, we'll absorb it, but it, it won't go on this list.
List.
So what it was, so Carrie sort of says, let's stick with the original process. Does anyone else have thoughts?
I do like the idea of releasing-
Yeah, 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 no, right, no, 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 that notwithstanding, I'm talking about, yeah, we can-
I do think, like, you can have one, like, beautifully written submission about one name and 50 mediocre ones about another. I'm not sure that one, I'm not sure that they carry the same weight, you know?
Sure.
I mean, I'm not sure, I, I feel like they-
But the point is everyone's-
They do a different story, so if we're gonna release one for each one, I think we should just release them.
Yeah, sure.
So, so we suggesting a PDF of every email we've gotten to date and future emails? Like, are we suggesting-
Stop at the new-
We stop now, we stop-
Yeah, we don't need to see the, I vote for, or my, I lend my support to XYZ name. It would be, would be, it would, actually, it would be the emails that we received from the opening of the process through today.
Yep.
Every email, like PDF it and attach it to our agenda.
Yeah, and make it available on the website where you've made the process available on the website.
Let's, let's get even more detail. Well, I mean, if we don't do it here, where are we gonna do it? You know, we, we, we don't want this to be more controversial than it has to be.
Yep.
You know, some people are gonna be disappointed, there's no question about that. Because there's some strong advocacy. So, we will share the complete text, but not the identity of the submission, of the-
I think that's fair.
Well, let's just, I, I think it needs to be a committee agreement.
I don't agree with that, I think-
I, I, that's why I'm bringing it up, let's get clear on what we're doing.
It's a public record.
Right.
When you send us email, it's a public record.
I understand, I, I would be in favor of that, but I'm offering up this just to-
I've seen, yeah, because I've seen other committees, the full email is attached in their packet.
Maybe just redact the email address, so we're not-
Yeah, the, oh, yeah.
They're personal.
Yeah, that, that's where it becomes tricky. You don't want anybody getting caught in a, I hate, you know, Mary Rice, how dare you submit her.
Well, the select board used to just put all the emails in their packet with no redaction. They don't, this year, but they used to.
I would be in favor of the name, but redacting the-
Is there any argument for, for not pulling the email addresses?
Wait, say that again?
Is there any argument to be made for not removing the email addresses?
I don't think so. No one is, I don't know.
From a public records perspective, uh, any perspective?
I mean, it's all public record, everybody gets that when they email us, that everything that they've emailed is public record.
Right.
Not giving them necessarily their private information.
Somebody can choose, can go for a public records request, do whatever they want. It doesn't preclude them from doing that, but we're not precluded from removing them.
Removing it, right, yeah.
No, I wouldn't say so.
I think it's appropriate.
Then I'm comfortable with that, yeah.
Yeah, appropriate to redact the private, keep, maintain privacy of the-
Like, release the names, but not-
But not the email address. Yeah, I wouldn't want to list some, and, and also too, for many of the citizens who put their-
Address.
Physical addresses, I think it's appropriate to redact that as well. Not all did, but some did.
The whole body of the text.
Yeah.
We agreed?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That's fine.
Yeah, who's gonna do all this work?
Yeah, do you need help pulling all that together?
So can I ask you-
I don't know how to redact anything to be, oh.
Do you do that in the packet you sent to the bridge?
Oh, I haven't sent anything to the bridge, my son and the warts, remember? So I just, I started pulling it together. But I have not, and, and, and actually, in the one for the bridge, I had just put, because I was gonna do it in a document rather than forward them millions of emails, I had put, you know, Ellen Garrison in red with the body of the text, sorry, the body of the email in there, you know, untouched and unedited, it didn't have the person. So I can add the, you know, well, now we'll do a different thing and hopefully we'll send that to the bridge as well.
Everything and then let the bridge get it out of it.
Yeah, I just was, from a time sensitivity standpoint with the bridge, I was hoping to get it out today, this-
What, can you do, is it, can we like a both and? Like, you can do what you did, we're gonna do-
Right, and then, so they can at least get started and then we'll add, yeah.
It probably won't go in on Friday anyway. We're kind of at the deadline, because I think the deadline is noon on Tuesdays, right? So-
Yeah, but like, they-
Well, they might be writing an article right now as we speak, I don't know, we'll find that out.
So, all right.
Okay.
So, okay, so we have that piece of the process. I, I would like to hear someone other than Carrie about changing the process itself with the dates. Shall we stick to our original process?
Well, it's a question to ask. Do, if we change the process, do we think we'll get a different or better outcome?
And you think no, I think no.
I'm not, I'm just, I'm trying to-
All right, let's stick to the process, let's, let's stick to it. Sorry, I opened more cans.
What's the, uh, what's the timeline for trying to get the letters up? Because I do think that's important for, uh, people commenting.
A suit, like, what's your morning look like?
I'm with the district attorney and a whole bunch of chiefs tomorrow morning.
What's Aaron's morning look like?
I can talk to you offline.
We'll figure, okay. It is, it is of utmost-
Done, I'll get it done, yeah.
Yeah.
Everyone good? All right, thank you guys.
Are you gonna send something out from the school committee?
Yes.
We've, we've sent things out before, like, I mean, I, I personally sent out the cell phone tower looking for feedback. Are we sending that out to, on, from the school committee? Because it is our process. Are we sending that out to the district? Are we sending it out to the bridge? I just want to be clear of what our next steps are.
For the comments period, to remind-
The comment-
Announcing that, yeah, and giving the public the names in, through the district-wide email, through the school committee list. Yeah, we can put that, and we can, it can be from the school committee.
So I would suggest we just send out a list of names tomorrow.
Yes.
Kick off, and then we can add in the-
Yeah, the edit, yeah.
Great.
It's a good idea.
Okay. So everybody's in agreement, stick to the original dates, get all of this information out as soon as possible. This is also gonna go to the town. Town has been cooperative, the bridge has been an excellent partner. We have all the right pieces in place and clearly, the message was very successfully communicated to the public based on the response, so.
Can we maybe attach that slide to this agenda and just fix?
Sorry, we'll send that slide to you.
Oh, yeah, and just fix that last name.
Oh, yeah, I did, yeah, that was-
Attach it, and then people can go back.
Do that, I will send it to you. Dr. Charles Willey, not Dr. Charlie's Willie, got it? Okay. Um, all right, so thank you guys for helping me through that intellectually, with that process. Now, we are gonna move forward to Bob and Lori talking about some revisions we have to the Concord Public School Budget.
Should I share a touchscreen?
That would be awesome.
So while Bob's pulling that up, just a little bit of why we're able to bring you some updated information, and Kristin can chime in too, since she was the author of the grant that's making this a viable discussion. So through Desi-submitted grant for high-quality materials, we requested subsidy for the middle school math program that you've heard so much about. And we were awarded that grant late last week. So, do you want to add anything about the grant process or what the qualifications were?
Sure, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has a curriculum review process. It's called CURATE. And so it's a panel of teachers that looks and reviews curriculum against the standards that they're supposed to be teaching. And the one that we've selected in Vision Math is one of their high qualities. So they're trying to help us speed along the adoption of, of high-quality materials. And so that's what it's for, it was $70,000.
And we're accepting 60 of that because we had budgeted 120, and it's a matching grant, so they'll do half, we'll do half. Great, so I'm gonna let Bob take it from there and just talk you through the numbers. I'm gonna cut to the chase though and say I'm bringing you to guideline.
Very good news.
What question? Is it a fiscal '25 or is it a time-open grant?
It's for right now.
It's for right now.
So we're working through the DESI process as to how we accept the money and how we use the money allocated in '25. Bob and Kristin are gonna talk through that with the state. I'm sure other districts are having the same.
For grant that we intend to use in fiscal '25.
We will use it in '24, but our matching component, oh, '25.
I see.
Right.
We suspect there's ways we will be able to work through that without a big problem.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Kristin.
Yes, thank you, Kristin.
When did you, when did you, November 9th?
Oh, oh, very specific.
Wow, there's another grant you'll hear about sometime.
Yeah.
Similar.
I was gonna mention that in my updates later.
So that left, that, that reduction of 60,000 left us with the gap of 27,000 to 29 to guideline. We made a reduction to professional development staff, contract services. I will note that we have a fair amount of SEL professional development in there, and we've been successful in obtaining some grants this year in support of SEL, both through Comprehensive Health Grant, that, that was the high school, but also recently, 45,000 at CPS, that was a different SEL grant. So the intent here is to cut 27, 25, see if we can find grant funding to offset it. If not, then potentially scale back and some-
There's some other restructuring we've talked about doing, There's some other restructuring we've talked about doing, so we are very comfortable making that reduction to professional development without compromising our goals.
Great.
So that overall reduction of 87 to 29, which was our gap to guideline, brings us to 46,515,714. It's an increase of $1,468,568, or 3.26% over last year, and that's consistent with a guideline increase of 3.26%.
Proposed by the FinCom.
Correct.
Right. That's great. Anyone have thoughts, comments?
Great news. I just have some other questions about budget in general, but not about this number and.
We, that's appropriate.
Um, so budget book. So I saw on our internal calendar, February 15th, when are we going to review the budget book, or at least?
Yeah, I think that's when we're going to do a budget workshop. Is that right? I forget.
I'm not sure we've settled this.
Okay.
We haven't settled this yet.
Okay, so I think one of the things that we're hoping to do would be to continue with the, like, budget workshops. And at that point, we would have a discussion. I think Bob has a template that he has found successful in the past. He might be able to bring that to us for us to look at and and eventually hopefully move forward. Does that make sense?
Would that be?
Sometime in.
We need to set a date. I will have to set a date.
I had it on the radar for sure. A date in the schedule was definitely the targeted date.
I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was, you know, our hopes were over the summer, like, okay, let's look at the whole year and try and like slot things in. But I'm not sure that date is going to happen in February. We now have additional, we have some additional meetings that we just learned about maybe today. There are additional meetings with both FinComs. There's the Concord meeting with the Select Board, with chairs of the Carlisle FinCom and Carlisle Select Board and the Carlisle Town Manager. So a few more additional meetings going on.
We kind of now stinks, I think, is what Trish is trying to say, so.
And with these changes too, like, it'll be good to get a clean budget book. So it's, you know, here we are and it's wrapped up in a nice bow.
Are we still targeting the hearing of March 6th? To have something?
March 6th for the thing, the Concord hearing?
Yes, for the budget book.
For the budget.
I think we're hoping, we need to. I'm going to start brainstorming with Bob and bring you some ideas because we had been waiting for that workshop and given the delays, I think we should get started.
I think we're just, yeah.
As I constantly say, we can have a separate meeting.
Yes, 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 of course we can.
I feel like some of these nights are getting a little brutal.
We've had a lot, we've had a lot added on to our nights.
And I think, yeah, with all the executive sessions that we're anticipating, I think it is likely going to be another meeting, so.
So how about if we bring you an update maybe next week? We'll update the committee next week as to how it's looking.
And in the meantime, you'll probably get some sort of doodle poll or something about availabilities for dates.
Okay. And just where are we with, are we closed, completely closed out on Concord Public Schools for FY '23?
Yes.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, it's not meant to get gotcha, but Carrie LaFleur said we are not at the FinCom.
The town's not.
No, she said the schools have encumbrances.
We've, what was the question?
Maybe I'll, I'll listen to it again.
We have encumbrances for things that we've ordered at the end of FY '23.
She just said the schools aren't closed out, that's all.
We can't close out with outstanding buses that haven't arrived yet when we can't pay the bill till they arrive, so. We've talked with Anthony. He reached out after that meeting. I saw what she talked about, and we've tried to open up the communication to better understand what.
So maybe if we could just clarify somehow or another with FinCom, because I think they were just like, this under.
Yeah, I can say, so we've reconciled with the town.
Next time we meet with.
End of the year.
You know?
They haven't closed their books, so technically everything in the town is open.
I'm just saying, next time we're all in the room together, maybe we could just make that clear.
We have closed our books. We will communicate with them about why they have outstanding.
No, and I think that in their public meeting, you know, it, it was confusing, but our books are, are closed. But I think because the town is still waiting on some things, it's, the whole town is waiting on some things. I know.
It was confusing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, sorry, we agree that it was confusing. That's fine.
Bob, can you speak to the template you're considering? Is it one that's in use in another district?
So I've looked at the previous budget book. There's certain information that it looks like the committee is used to receiving, things like fleet aging, line item budgets. We have, um, the NASDAQ projections, that would be something we'd want to include in that. Information on OPEB, some of the information that the FinCom requested, like OPEB, some, some of those are more to the regional.
Right.
I'm going to put some information on grant funds, so, I mean, I'd be open to, you know, if there's things that people have suggestions to maybe write it through the chairs and, but I'll, I'll develop a list. I would like to kind of hone in on what that list is before we produce things and say, well, we don't need this and we, we would like these things instead and.
Good, good.
So that was part of my thought that we were going to have a kind of a.
Discussion.
Feedback on, this is what we're proposing. Are there other things we'd like to include? Or are these things we, there might be some things that I propose that might not be too valuable to others. And just through that process, agreeing what we're going to present and.
Perfect.
And move forward.
Good, thank you.
Cool. Everyone good? All right. We've got some action items, everybody. I would like at this time to entertain a motion to vote on our revised Concord Public School FY '25 operating budget, if someone would move it.
Shoot.
Move. I just, no, I have it. I move, I'll do it. I move that the Concord School Committee votes to approve revised FY '25 CPS budget amount of $46,515,714.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Motion carries. All right. Last week, or at our last meeting, uh, Mr. Conry and Superintendent Hunter bought, brought to us a revised capital plan. As well as a memo that sort of outlined the thought process behind it, as well as some hopes about how things might be improved moving forward. At this point, we've all had some ample time to see it, discuss it, so I would entertain a motion.
Do you have some further comments?
Okay, do you want to, well, can we do that in the discussion after the motion?
Sure.
Is that, okay.
Yeah.
Um, I would entertain a motion to vote to approve the revised fiscal '25 Concord Public Schools capital plan.
I move that the Concord School Committee votes to approve, oh, I just lost it, sorry. Right there. Oh, I have it up. That the Concord School Committee votes to approve the revised FY '25 CPS capital request in the amount of $446,000.
Second.
Okay, anyone want to have the discussion?
So be specific to the thorough, 200,000. I would like us to have a more thorough discussion, I know I was saying that at home. About, uh, the plan and the proposal or proposals. So not tonight, obviously, but in the future, the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And not to hold up approving it, but just so that we put on record that you would like to see some more detail.
Correct.
Okay.
And we should have a process of, it should be our discussion and input should come to us and not to the site. Because this is the school committee decision.
So I'm going to, may I just clarify in the process, because I know some of you participated last week and others didn't. We had a forum, so we've been gathering community input through surveys, which Cynthia's correct, we shared some of that information at the forum last week. Our intention was to finish the input process, get a sense of what we might consider and bring you something to respond to. I didn't, unless you want to change that and have an actual working build of the ideas. We're still processing what we heard last week, because there was a lot of feedback, so we're in the throes of talking more with the professionals that we're working with and looking at what we're going to move forward and what we're going to revise based on the feedback we've heard.
Right, just so we don't.
When do you anticipate, like vaguely, that might be?
I'll be honest, I think the feedback last week was so strong, it's sent us backwards in time a bit, because we need to take all that in and I don't want to rush that, so I think it's going to be a little longer than we anticipated. We're meeting with them tomorrow, so that'll be probably when we'll have a better sense of where we are.
See each other.
Yes.
Okay, so the process you're proposing is to allow your team to synthesize all of that data and bring us some proposals for our deliberation. That is okay with me, but.
I'd appreciate all the detail that we can get on it. I, I attended the meeting remotely and couldn't pick up much.
Yeah, we struggled with its technology last week significantly.
Looked at slides and couldn't pick up much, so the more we can do at this table in regard to that, given the magnitude of the budgetary request, I think is an appropriate responsibility for this committee. It's the better part of a quarter million dollars at this point.
So when you're done with the input, we'll make a plan for moving forward.
All right, I probably need a little more guidance on what we're bringing.
But that's not removing it from this number.
No, you're, you're, we're still going to vote to move forward pending, you know, well, not pending, but.
I mean, I, I guess I just want to name.
assumption and expectation that we.
Money is going to go towards some version of improvements to the campus, whether, where we're fielding things, improving playgrounds. The biggest discussion is about whether or not we're parking or not adding or reconfiguring driveways, more accessibility. I think we've tried to be really clear of the buckets of things that we're deliberating over. And then I'll remind you, you've got that $200,000 donation that we're intending toward the playground as well. So, um, that needs to get factored into the discussion, but.
I'll just say, I was, I was there on whatever night it was, Thursday night, and there was a lot of emphasis on parking and whatnot, but I think there was also a missed section of it where, like, there was a lot of thought and attention to playgrounds and kids and where the, where the kids are going to get this outside extra, extra energy out. I mean, this is, these are elementary school kids.
The energy out?
They need to run around. They need, they need to shake it out. So, um, it was, yeah, I, I, I learned a lot about the feedback from the community, from the, it was mostly from the neighbors, but I also think that there was a lot of good information about the possibility that's.
That's great.
So I guess my last comment is we would normally bring you the proposal with or without the vendor. Often we bring the vendor to you so they can prepare and finish the report they're working on and get your feedback on that, so you've got their recommendations to deliberate. I would kind of like to keep through that process, but I can talk more with the chairs about.
Is that, does that, is that acceptable?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, okay, great.
Awesome.
Okay, so that'll be a little bit longer while we work with them to.
Understood.
Keep it moving.
And I would try to, um, I was reflecting on Dr. Hunter's memo and her understandable frustration on the capital process. And I'm going to, as a member of this committee, make a strong recommendation that we need to have a town-wide capital planning, standing capital planning committee. And I'm hoping that the select board and town manager have that discussion. I've been watching capital planning for 15 years now, and it's never been going well. And that's not our fault.
No, 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 yeah.
I just think it needs to be centered. It needs to have dedicated public meetings, and I think we were, that's the only way we're going to really start having conversations about what's, what's going to happen with capital in this town, so.
Cool.
Thanks.
All right. Any more discussion before we take a vote?
Yeah, I, I want to highlight, Dr. Hunter, what you said about sustainability. The notion that the schools are not doing enough and that we're spending too much. And I wonder, is that a conflict, as you suggest, or, or might you also say that's exactly where we need to be?
Yeah, sure, yeah. Both are true.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I think we should be pushing our town goals and our school goals up against fiscal realities, which is going to be.
Clearly beyond just us sitting in this room and.
Yeah, sure.
And then more importantly for me tonight, uh, what of the original $900,000 ask do you consider important enough to have at least considered moving to operating, but then not?
Bob and I are still working through that.
Because we don't want to say they weren't important.
Yeah, no, we're not saying, I assure you the conversations of my office would not say they're not important.
Therefore, I think we need a few minutes here, because this is where things happen in public. And we're, we're not abandoning our needs.
Right.
Or ignoring them or saying they weren't worthy, so what do we say to all of that?
So Bob can chime in, obviously, and I think what we're trying to do right now is to sort out the urgent, mainly timeliness, what's urgent that maybe we need to look at, even FY '24 for some of the smaller items. What did we budget for in '25 that, you know, maybe could be offset or delayed a little bit? You know, we're in this big prioritization discussion, I think is where we're at. And what are we able to defer longer or could get embedded in something else? So we're still reviewing, because it's a big, pretty significant list. Do you want to prioritize any?
I mean, there, so some of them can be deferred, flooring replacement. But I, I'd say that there's some building and management system upgrades. That's 45,000. That's something we'd want to look at, trying to find a way to fund. I will say we, you know, we do have 50,000 allocated each to PBD and Sandborne this year that if it doesn't get spent, we could potentially repurpose. So the building management system upgrades are important. That's 45,000. A hot water heater at Alcott, 30,000. I think that's not one we can wait on. The committee might, this one's less meat, but like just based on feedback, you know, is there something we need to do for campus safety in terms of Alcott being able to communicate better? So we, we use this product that was like a mesh wifi, so we had 15,000 for that. We can also see if we have any year money to cover. That one's a little bit smaller. And, um, the copiers.
We're going to have to figure something out with the copiers.
They're, they're kind of end of life, so those would be the big ones, I think. And then the IT data center, doing something, we might have a, a lower cost alternative, but, you know, we had anticipated that being 35,000, so. I mean, there's definitely some things here, but we'll, we'll have to look at, maybe we can repurpose some of it if we don't have to pay for things at Sandborne and PBD. With those contingencies, perhaps we can repurpose those. We haven't really, we also need to kind of, I need to loop back with our facilities director and kind of get his ranking. Some of this is an initial, you know, brief discussion I had with him while he's been running around putting out fires, so. But that's kind of our thoughts. There are things in here we want to do. There's others that we could definitely wait on, but, you know, I would say we don't want to wait forever.
I hope we can keep this on our school committee radar with your help, and speaking of putting out fires, perfect segue, we're close to it. We've had building issues at the middle school. Are we looking at, uh, operating money to move into those solutions or into little money that?
We are nickel and diming it as best as you possibly could. We just hung this really ugly bladder catcher of water in the gym in Sandborne for $5,000 instead of something prettier.
Somebody needed evidence we needed to replace.
Between that and the fire alarm, which needed some quick repairs because one of the power outages zapped it. Again, we got that cost down as minimal as possible, so they're teetering right on the, that was 12,000, I think. So far, we're sort of sitting between operating, trying to not, to not go into the capital, because those are small numbers. But how much can the operating budget absorb is the question, and how does the rest of the year go?
We're not going after borrowing costs.
No.
Just of the 12,000 here and the.
Gosh awful bladder thing that proves you're not borrowing money for Sandborne.
I haven't been in the high school when it was, I mean, there were barrels in all my.
Things hanging off the walls. I went to the back to school night and I remember there was like a dehumidifier with a wet towel on. I was like, I don't even know what that.
It as the IV inside the one. People that we weren't.
So, but we successfully got that gym ready for a basketball game this afternoon, which was the big goal, so we're excited about that.
All right, all right, we still haven't actually voted. We're still talking. All right. So all in favor of the capital request?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Okay, motion carries. With that, the Concord School Committee will remain in session and we will welcome our Carlisle members to the table.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Actually, before we start, two minute break.
Two minute break.
Two minute break, and then I'll call the order.
I just didn't. I just gave up.
Okay.
All right. And with that, I will call the Concord Car Law Regional School Committee to order. And we will go to our student update. Thank you to Harry and Zaria and Felicity for being very patient with us. We appreciate you staying.
No worries. I think Felicity had to run. She said she might come back, but in the meantime, Zaria and I can just get things started. Wait one second. Oh, sorry. We're having the usual problem with the screen share, but we can just go through it orally for now, if that's all right with you guys.
Perfect.
Okay, so, Zaria, do you want to start?
Yeah, I can start. Students have begun their second semester classes. I know personally, a lot of stuff in my schedule has been getting changed, including a new class called Black History, which is an independent study being offered by CCHS. And it's just a really interesting class. Hi, Felicity. It's a really interesting it's a really interesting class that basically all the students help create the curriculum for the class for the following years. And I just think it's a really important class to have at CCHS as it diversifies like our our the history that's being taught in our community. And I just think it's really important and really cool. And yeah.
Yeah, and along those lines, like we just had midterms last week. And I think I heard from a lot of people that it's always nice to have that like break in your schedule where you can just kind of like get everything, like review everything from the semester and then like kind of reset for the new semester. So I think that went pretty well for most people.
Yeah, it's also like it continues to be a busy time for everyone participating in a winter sport. I know the swim team had a meet today. We have a track meet tomorrow. So that is exciting for a lot of athletes and then also for a lot of kids who are getting to watch. And then also the Rivers Revolutions program, as we move into the new semester, has a new cohort of students. A lot of my friends are doing it, and I know they're very excited about it. They made their first trip into the field, as they say. And they went on a hike through fairyland today. So that seemed like a lot of fun.
Tomorrow is also a very important anniversary of the CCHS Spectrum Club, which is the LGBTQ plus alliance. So it's really quite amazing to see that they've been going strong for 30 years. And we've definitely come a long way, both at the school and in terms of like the broader community in terms of like rights and just general acceptance. So that's just very exciting.
Next week, we have another early release, and the nutrition break is changed from being 10 a.m. to 11 a.m. And I feel like that's just kind of better as it's more fitting for like when lunchtime actually is. So I'm kind of excited for that.
Oh, my bad. Wait, sorry. We weren't quite done. The so we also had all state auditions for performance or for the performing arts students who made it into senior districts and got an all state recommendation. We actually had a significant number of people get accepted into all states, which is really great. It's very prestigious as always and very exciting. There are also preparations for the Spring Musical, which was recently announced. It's going to be the prom. There's a lot of excitement around that. And then also, I don't usually do like other than performing arts updates, but today there's also a debate update, which is that we're actually going to be hosting a tournament the weekend of, I believe, February 2nd and 3rd. It's going to be a pretty major tournament as it's the national qualifier for basically the entire region of New England. So that's going to be super exciting to have lots of people coming to our school.
Yeah. And then the final thing is that with all this discussion about potential names for the new middle school building, we are also hoping to listen some feedback amongst the high school student body and share that with you guys. So that's something that we're definitely going to talk about more in future updates.
Great. I have to say, the three of you have really grown in the past like two years you've been with us. I think back to like the first updates that you guys were on and, well, Harry, you've been with us for a long time. But the first updates, you know, you were a little bit shy, a little bit quiet. And now I look at you and I feel like, you know, proud mother, you know, you guys really, you've done a great job. They're very thorough. I'm learning a lot about the high school. And I did know about the debate because of the Instagram. So I would have to tell my committee members, follow all the high school Instagrams. You get so much information. And I just found the debate one. And so Felicity is also a proud member of the debate team, so you might see her on their Instagram. So it's good to see you guys doing what you love to do, and you're all super involved outside of school as well as in school. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and send your feedback to us. We would love to hear that. Send it to Mrs. Anderson, actually.
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
Mrs. Anderson. Oh, and I have to, the other thing, I'll embarrass her, but she was a founding member, in case you guys are wondering, of Spectrum. Were you a founding member?
I was a founding member, and I don't like you mentioning that that was 30 years ago. This might be my favorite update that you've ever done. So thanks for that, and I'll go home and cry. Yeah, no. So, yeah, I was one of the founding members back, I think, in, yeah, 94, I guess. I felt like, anyway, the year I graduated.
And she was also a school committee rep. So.
I was.
Someday, maybe you guys will also want to join the ranks of all of us on school committee.
Yes. Yes, I was in your role in 94, going to Spectrum Club and student and school committee meetings. And here I am, about to be doing the same thing. Really evolved, everybody. You guys are so great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Forward to hearing from you guys.
Thank you. Nice. Nice job with the update.
Thank you.
See you next time.
Thank you.
I know. I'm sorry. I embarrassed you, but I had to do it. It was a great update. It really is. But I do think about like the very. They're very smooth. And even if they don't have the screen share, they're doing it. They're just they're like, yeah, that's okay. Very flexible. So I love it. All right. So with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Okay, so with that, I would attend a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's so long on the agenda. It's it's nice to check that out. All right, correspondence at the region. I believe I only had one piece of correspondent that was a duplicate to CPS. So I will turn it over to Alexa to discuss the correspondence of this week.
I don't have a number for you, but as discussed in our Concord Public School meeting, we have had a really encouraging, wonderful response from our solicitation of public input on the naming of the middle school. I I can I don't, again, I don't have an exact number, but in the last two weeks alone, we have received over 100 pieces of correspondence. So I think it speaks to a lot of things. I think it speaks to the fact that our process was a good one. Our communication with our constituents and the levers that we use is strong and successful. And also, it speaks to our citizens who are who are engaged and who who really do care about our community. So I think all of that is really good news. And we also had a little bit of correspondence about safe routes to school as well. So but it was really dominated by the middle school outreach.
Okay, and with that, we'll go to the superintendent's update first. That's okay with you?
Sure. So a few highlights of certain things that are happening either in the world, some of the circles I'm in or otherwise. Tomorrow, I will attend District Attorney Marion Ryan hosts an annual breakfast for superintendents and police chiefs. She's actually coming to Minuteman this year, so it's very convenient. So the chief and I will both be there in the morning. On Wednesday, that is Wednesday tomorrow, on Thursday, the Superintendent's Association is having their midyear conference, so I'll be attending that. And there's a presentation on, I forget the exact title, but the topic is really related to managing culture and politics in this, you know, really kind of challenging time. So we're looking forward to hearing any advice coming out of there as well as time with my colleagues and checking in with all of them. On Friday, we are in all day meetings at the middle school with the staff rotating through one last round of furniture fixture and equipment conversations with the design team. We're actually not too far out from bids being prepared and going out, especially given the supply chain challenges. They want to not risk anything there. So that'll be an all day, pretty fun activity to take it one more level of detail of readiness as we look forward to the new school continuing to progress and get closer to being online. Thursday night, you mentioned Spectrum, so I'm not going to mention that. Thursday night, we are in Carlisle. The high school team starting to work with incoming families and talking on schedules and early acclimation to CCHS. So excited to be over there. And then finally, I'll just mention the grant that has been alluded to a couple of times, and we received notification just in the last day or two, that another grant Kristen submitted for social emotional learning materials was awarded to CPS for $45,000. It'll be able to offset some of the current work we're doing. And of the new things we were submitting for was some more trauma professional, trauma based professional development for Willard. And $15,000 Kristen for the high school. So similar. I think what is becoming very validating, and I think my inference as to why we're being so successful with the grants is our priorities are in the place that Desi thinks they should be aligned, and the work we've identified is in the place they think it should be aligned. And so we're submitting things we are planning on doing already. And it's meeting the criteria for what they consider high quality and very valid. And that's the way you want grants to work. It's really hard to look at the grant and go, we have to think of an idea so we can submit for it. It's much better to have the idea, the plan, and even be partially executing and then submit so that you get some subsidy or some additional funds. So I think we're we're in a been really successful this past grant cycle. And as Desi continues, I think, to put money in the important topics, we're taking full advantage, which is outstanding. And also something that's been very challenging here because our demographic often prohibits us or minimizes our eligibility. And I think we're finding ways to get past that.
Yeah, just a quick shout out to the mental health teams, both at Willard and at CCHS. Tracy Breen, Michael Abalafia, Christina Johnson at the school. They really sat down with me and really wrote.
Use the mic.
Microphone. Oh, yeah.
Right.
That's okay.
But just a shout out to the mental health team members who helped write the grants. So at Willard, it was Tracy Breen and Michael Abalafia, the school counselor and the school psychologist. And then at the high school, it was Christina Johnson, who is the wellness coordinator.
And just the last thing, I know we aren't getting a lot of lead time on these things. So when they get posted, people are having to drop everything and prioritizing them. So just a kudos that we're finding ways to do that as well.
Right, right.
Congratulations again.
All right. And I have a couple of things for the chair's update. Last week, I attended the Solar Task Force meeting. Lori also joined me. I think you were present, Alexa. Cynthia, I think you were there for part of that. So we'll have more conversation about that at the end. On February 12th, we get clarification, which I think you got this by email, that the select board in Concord is meeting, and Alexa and I have been invited along with Lori and Bob and the Carlisle FinCom Chair and Liaison and Concord FinCom Chair. So that will be February 12th for a discussion on CPS budget, the regional budget, capital for CPS, and capital of the region, which is the amenities building. So that is on February 12th. On February 15th, there's another meeting. We're still looking for a little bit more clarity on this. Carlo was having a FinCom meeting. Concord was having a FinCom meeting. I thought we were going to Carlisle and Concord, but now it appears as though it's a joint Carlisle, but I don't have confirmation of this, a joint Carlisle and Concord FinCom meeting where Lori and Bob will go, Ryan from Carlisle, I believe Carrie LaFleur and Anthony. And Alexa and I will go to that is not going to be, we're not going to call to order in that meeting. So that's on the 15th. But if I get any more details, I'll certainly send that along. And then on February 8th, there's a Commission on Disability meeting that I've invited to to discuss the amenities building. So as town meeting is approaching in both towns, we're going to do a little bit more work on kind of our slides and presentation on the amenities building. You know, there are some questions on why now? Why do we need it? So we're going to try and answer those things through a few more slides to both towns. And I think that's all I had. Alexa, do you have anything?
I assume you're all exhausted by me at this point. So after our Concord meeting, no, I don't have anything.
And why don't we just quickly just score on them if anybody has an update? If you don't have an update, totally fine. You don't have to say anything. If you have any updates for any committee that you liaise with.
I just have some questions. Did somebody have an update?
I do.
I was just gonna go around the room. Let me just go around first, and then if you have any questions after that. Carrie, anything?
I don't think so.
Great.
2229 Committee, looking at the 46 acre site in West Concord, half of which is, let's say, tainted with superfund residue, and the other half is untouched. I don't believe the chair's been contacted by the 2229 Committee.
We don't have a liaison with them, right?
And I serve on that committee, so I'm sort of de facto liaise. But there are people who do the reach out to town departments. They haven't come your way because there's a presumption that with the new middle school, we might be tapped out in terms of our need for things that we could do that would require capital investment. And secondly, that we've got the Peabody to surplus, but I don't think assumptions are very wise. So do you want a formal communication from the committee where they would put before you the request to imagine what your needs might be vis a vis that property coming online if indeed the town acquires it? And there's no certainty the town will even seek to acquire it. But that's that's what's happening now is that the town is looking at the possibility of acquisition.
Do we have anything on the 2229? The 2229 Main Street is the superfund.
That's NMI Star Met.
Star Met.
Yes, where it's got depleted uranium as the primary pollutant.
Yes, I've answered a couple of questions for the committee on how we manage both Knox Trail site and the landfill at the high school. DEP oversees one, EPA oversees another.
Right.
All the work we have to.
Just want to make sure the committee's in the loop to the extent you want to be. So do you want a formal outreach?
I do not think so.
I don't think we really. We know where to find you. How about that?
Mind, it's easy. Okay.
How about this? If anything comes up that's school related, let us know. We're going to actually say that at the chair's breakfast because we actually found ourselves on like eight different committees' agendas last in the last like month. And we don't always know that we're going to be on someone's agenda. So that that's something that I would like for people. If anyone, if there's a committee and the schools are on an agenda, let us know so somebody can be there. Because I think it's just more helpful.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, the town has needs for sure. So I think the land is a priority for them to.
And there's significant liens on the property that have to be resolved, even before you get to the health, the human health considerations. Thank you.
Okay, Sharon, any updates? Nope. Carrie? Yeah, Adult Ed, just wanted to let you know about two up.
Yeah, Adult Ed, just wanted to let you know about two upcoming parent programs. The first one is a three-part series on diversity without divisiveness and with Carlos Holt. And it's starting Thursday, March 28th, 7:00 to 8:30. And it's a hybrid, so in-person and Zoom for the three Thursdays. The sessions are, you've got to be carefully taught, private beliefs versus public tolerance, and preparing for constructive partnership. And that is free of charge. And then the other one is Digital Health and Safety with Katie Greer. I don't know, I know her name because I know she's come up, so. And that's for it says this one-day event will include three 45-minute sessions for elementary, one at each elementary covering, you know, digital privacy. I don't know what technology tattoos are. Maybe I should- aiming online and that sort of thing. So those are the two that are coming up.
Great. I'm really glad Carrie mentioned those. The schools are partnering with them all. The PTGs are helping to sponsor the free one of the diversity. So there's been a lot of background work to make those really community events.
Anybody know what technology tattoos are?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Guess we're all going to learn from Katie.
Great. Cynthia?
So you went through those meetings very fast.
Yes.
So it's Select Board in Concord.
Yep.
On 212.
Yep.
215 is Carlisle.
Not sure. So 215 was supposed to be, I'll give you the, I'll give you the whole version. It was supposed to be Carlisle FinCom. It's been on the Concord FinCom schedule. But we learned today it might possibly be a joint Carlisle and Concord FinCom, but I don't have clarification on that yet. Or where it will be.
Okay. And then was there another one?
Oh, I've been invited to the Commission on Disabilities on February 8th.
Okay. And the topic is just-
They just invited me to join their meeting.
Okay.
And I think I'll probably be asked about the amenities building.
Okay.
We've talked about ADA compliance for that.
So just back to this Concord Select Board meeting. So if the topic comes up about anything regarding capital plan, I just hope that you can, since I cannot speak, you'll express that you have a member or identify me or whatever, who thinks that's a good idea. Thanks.
Yep. Domingos, do you have anything for us?
I'm not at this time.
Great. All right. Well, it's good to see you. All right, so that is Chair's Liaisons Update, and that brings us to the school calendar discussion. You have a copy of the draft school calendar for next year. I sit on that committee along with Lori, and we have teachers from each school that are on that committee. And you have the draft in front of you, so this is kind of our time to discuss it. Lori, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
I could give you a few highlights.
Yes.
So that school next fall, based on where Labor Day falls, we would be bringing students back on the 28th, with the staff back on the 26th. October would be where we would have the high school conferences on the 21st, and the first of the PD paths, the three days on the 23rd. November, we're actually moving the middle school conferences back from December to November. There's been thoughts that it would be better to get information to parents earlier than rather waiting for the whole trimester to be over. So conferences, elementary would be the first, and middle school the eighth. December is pretty straightforward with the one exception of how the holiday falls and what that had some impact on. So we decided not to bring anyone back on the 23rd, which is a Monday in December. So that would have us getting out on the 20th, and we had some circular conversation, and I raised the question of a half-day still on the 20th. We really last month, we're in a place of readiness. The 22nd, when we were getting out, the half-day just felt really good. It allowed for a lot of joyful events and a lot of festivity. And I don't know if that would have changed with the full day, but I am quite sure that there wasn't going to be a lot of learning if everyone had stayed. It just felt like a great morale culture decision. So just a thought there. And we have been doing half-days on those Fridays regularly. That's been standing practice. Then you get into January, the full professional day for middle and high school would be the 21st because of where the Martin Luther King Day falls. February is the break. March, we put in an early release PD path because there's nothing else. April would be the parent conferences, a second one at elementary on the 3rd, plus the typical vacation. Graduation right now in May would fall on May 30th with no snow days. Students would get out with no snow on Friday, the 13th. Maybe it'll be good luck.
Has graduation ever been in May?
Yes, every now and then it's in May.
Interesting.
Yeah.
All right.
And I've seen it happen more since we went to the calendar, the secular calendar that we use, because those three days don't bump us out.
Right, right. Okay.
So it is, it is becoming not atypical. So that's where the draft is at. This is for your consideration and discussion with a proposed vote in two weeks.
And the only other thing just to note is the high school professional days are not on this calendar.
There's some early release-
Early release days.
That are still being discussed.
Disgust.
But we'll have that before we vote.
That, I don't think you will, because part of the discussion is the 115 release that we do now. Part of the review of the schedule rollout was a touch point with the CCTA and gathering of feedback of what's working. We want to look at that 115. You heard her just talk about where we put the break.
Tradition breaks.
Because the lunch isn't served. And would it make more sense to do fewer early releases but get out earlier? And make it more of an 1130 release with less frequency than the monthly 115? We don't have consensus on this. We're still in that discussion. I don't want to hold the calendar up while we do the due diligence to talk further. So I'd like you to, that's been very typical, that you haven't had all the early releases when you vote the calendar, and we bring them to you in the spring.
What time does high school get out on a regular day?
2:40.
So 11:15?
It's an hour and some.
That much. And I think this year, they're 10.
Yes, one a month.
Yep.
So that was part of the, you know, trial and error of the schedule changes and such. More to come. Again, we're not sure we have consensus on this. It just keeps coming up anecdotally a lot, so we want to research it before we commit to anything.
Does anyone have any comments on the calendar as written? And then it does, it's cut off on the screen right now, but it does say, there's a line, I think if they just scroll up a little.
Can you do that, Bob?
Is that Bob? Can you just scroll up a tiny bit? So this other way, if you scroll the other way.
There's a note.
So there's a note there that just says additional CCHS early release TBD. So when we do vote on it, that will be on there.
But we won't know at that time whether we're looking at the 115, a certain number of 115 PM releases. We won't know whether they're being released at 115 or 1115 or what the number will be. Just-
But we will.
Eventually.
Yeah, but we'll have to. Yeah, we added some in this fall.
We've almost every year brought you changes to the high school half-day schedule in the-
And then when we change it, we'll just vote again and change it with the additions.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
That's actually become a pattern because we don't want to slow the calendar down while we make plans.
People can make their big-ticket decisions.
Right, right.
Yep.
Any other comments on that? You don't have any concerns on any of the dates? They look good? All right, so with that, we are going to welcome Angel Charles to be with, she can be with us for the next few minutes. She is going to talk to us about launch first and some exciting opportunities there. And then she's going to give us her General Director of Student Services update, which we're looking forward to. So welcome. Thank you for waiting for us on a school night at that.
For having me.
Yeah, I thought she was-
Do you have the slides that you can share?
Yeah, I can do that. Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Bob's going to help me with the financial piece a little bit when we get to the end.
It's a joint favorite.
Yes.
It's teamwork.
It is teamwork, right?
And there we go.
So again, thank you so much for having me. I had actually, in response to the questions that you had sent me in advance, this was going to be something that I was going to talk about later. So you're getting a little bit of a preview because one of the questions that you asked me was one of my, what are a couple of focus areas that I'm going to have for the next 18 months? And what programmatic enhancements am I hoping to make as we look into the future? So launch is our 18 to 22 postgraduate program. I'm sure that you're all familiar with it. The students, in addition to learning offsite in the community for the vocational piece, also have a space here at the Ripley Building. Have you all had an opportunity to see that? No? Well, one of the suggestions that I have for how you can support me moving forward is to accompany me on a visit and tour of the various special education programs that we have across the district. So we'll make-
I'm actually looking forward to that. I did talk to her about that. I'm like, is she serious? Like, can we really come?
100% serious.
That's great.
So let's focus on launch. So the launch program, again, is for students who are 18 to 22 years old, who may need additional transitional and/or support before they enter into the public workforce and adulthood. So it's, we try at launch to provide a very highly individualized experience for students because for as many transition goals as a student has, think about it as, you know, when you're, you know, 18 to 22, and someone says, what would you like to do with your life? And we try to expose them to all of the possible options and then support them as they take that next step. Another piece that I think, can you forward just a little bit?
Here?
Nope.
Okay.
Great. So again, here are the goals for the launch program. We're really trying to provide as much, to the extent that we can, an integrated and inclusive setting to prepare our students for employment and beyond as they enter into adulthood. Another focus area that we have is to help improve and increase students' just general activity of daily living skills, things like making a bed, opening a checking account, making lunch, making dinner, making snacks, making a bed, doing laundry, all of those, those daily living skills that they're going to need to transition to adulthood. We also try to make sure that students feel comfortable accessing and moving about the community. And we try to educate the community as one of our goals, that we have these students in our community, and how we can support them and focus on their strengths so that they can eventually achieve fulfillment and independence into adulthood. So currently, the State of the Union, we have three students who are currently in launch, who are enrolled in our launch program. That makes it really hard to find a cohort. So when we're trying to figure out, you know, we, by nature of having three students, we have, which I think is a bonus, that we can highly individualize program for students. But one area that we're really hoping to improve is to have more of a robust cohort, so that students with like interests and needs and profiles can see one another, engage, and really have a true authentic cohort beyond three students. Ideally, we would love to have between 10 and 15 students within the program. That's something that I have a hope for in the future. Looking down into the pipeline, we currently have seven students who are in our pathways program at the high school, who we are hoping and expecting to attend launch in the next couple of years. When we look at, and part of the, you know, the work that I've been doing as within these first, you know, six to seven months in the role, is looking at trends and data analysis. And we currently have more students who are outplaced in transition programs than we are able to retain currently within our launch program. So again, you know, the goal is to have a critical mass, to have more of a cohort, and to really let the program grow. We found that over the years, but you can go ahead, you can go up if you'd like. We found that, you know, in the time that I've been in Concord, when we build these specialized programs and we give them attention, and we really look carefully at the needs of the students, they fill up. Build it, they'll come. So I'm truly confident that if we devote time, energy, resources, and attention to our postgraduate program, we will be able to attract and retain students and have less going to different placements. So, you know, when I was looking, my first opportunity to, and again, it's so connected to what I'm going to talk about later, but I've really spent this first part of the year really having, you know, eyes, ears, and hands-on, and exploring the various programs across the district. And given that I have to walk past launch space every time that I'm going over to visit the preschool or going over the steam lab or moving about, I naturally interact with these students in the program. So one question that was sort of driving the idea that I'm going to put forth is, you know, how can we really retain more students to have that robust peer cohort for our students with special abilities in Concord, Concord, Carlisle, and Boston? Also, how can we promote vocational, student-centered, and inclusive experiences for our students that is community-based and visible? So at the moment, while we are doing this for students, they are going here, there, and everywhere, depending on what they need. So I started thinking about, you know, what's, what would be a draw? What's working in other communities to offer an in-house, more varied approach and opportunities that will speak to a wide level of transition needs and student interest at the same time? So a couple of models that stood out to me and have stood out to me for a few years are two programs in neighboring communities. The first program, and if you ever are looking for a fun thing to do on a weekend and you want to get out and explore Metro West, the Borough Sugar Shack is a candy shop in the center of West Borough Center, which not only is a storefront where students are, you know, packaging, creating, and managing all aspects of a business, producing candy, doing everything from children's party favors, if you're having a children's party. The students have their classroom in the back half of the building and the front of the storefront where you can go in and do shopping. And the students are the face and the workforce behind the Sugar Shack. Maple and Maine in Shrewsbury has just opened, and actually, we're going to do a visit next week to see that in action. That is another storefront that's in Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, and they are selling Shrewsbury-centric goods, treats, and various things that students get a say in, everything from the marketing to, you know, product placement, to setting up, selling, running the cash register, inventory, all aspects of running the business. So a couple, I'm going to go to the next one. So a few benefits as opposed to, you know, having a wonderful transition program that's based in one place, not forward-facing, is it really does provide students with an authentic, community-based, authentically visible, community-based vocational experience. They're not going into a business and that for, you know, an hour and then leaving, they are the business. It also, again, if you've got students who are interested in art, and they're interested in designing advertisements or logos, or they're interested in computers, or if they're interested in organization, having a storefront gives students a huge range of various transition-related skills that they can really sort of find themselves within. It also, you know, I think one of the things that, besides the candy and, you know, the goods, that it's really delightful when you go into these shops and you get to engage with the students, and it raises the level of visibility of our students with special abilities within the community that the business lives in. It also, I think, you know, for better or worse, I have spent quite a bit of time with this in mind, just observing as I'm sitting in traffic at various locations around Concord, getting to work, looking at the foot traffic, looking, you know, knowing that this is a destination where people come to explore and to tour. And there's, there's just a lot of foot traffic, people out and about. Our community, our level of walkability would be a really great place to provide the community and visitors with a unique retail experience, and really just a very clear window into the wonderful work that we're doing with our students. So that's the why. And I think Bob is going to talk about the potential how for you to consider.
Thanks, Angel. So we, there's, you know, the financial and operational considerations are things I'm going to walk through a bit. I will say we had the benefit of a person, Assistant Business Manager, who worked in Shrewsbury, who was in a contract basis here for four months. So he's arranged us to get a tour of the new special ed retail store. They're not called the Sugar Shack. I forgot what theirs is called.
Maple and Maine.
Maple and Maine. So he's arranged for us to be able to see their operation with their Director of Student Services. And he's also given us some information about things to consider. So a lot of this is information obtained from him. So just wanted to give you a picture of it. And I will say in advance, too, I haven't quantified a lot of this because I kind of wanted to Um, and I will say in advance too, I haven't quantified a lot of this because I kind of wanted to, highlight the issues. As we go forward, we'd be able to quantify more of this. Um, but right now, uh, we're in the early stages. Um, first thing I wanted to do is explain that, um, for identifying and acquiring retail space is a formal RFP process. Um, we, we can't just, um, go looking and say we want this space. We have to post it. It's similar to, um, when you think of a bid, um, it's, it's similar to that. Um, we can factor in, we can define our requirements, we can include preferences and we can rate things, um, that based meets our needs. Some of the things that we might wanna, um, look at are, is it near public transit? You know, is it in an area near other retail establishments? We obviously, um, you know, it needs to be suitable commercial space as well. Um, condition of the building, things like that. So, um, that's the process and there's certain advertising that goes with it, but it's a proposal process. It's a little bit quirky in that, um, places that are looking for, um, looking to rent aren't necessarily looking to fill out as much paperwork as you would typically have in this type of thing. So, there is a little bit of coaching we likely would need to do if we find a place to get them to submit a proposal. The, the program costs, I, um, tried to find the different buckets. The, there's a couple ways of, uh, thinking of this. The first thing is that we may find a space, but it might not initially, um, in its condition that we see it in, meet our needs. So, there might be fit-up costs of the facility, whether, you know, to make it a suitable retail location. Um, depending on the property that we find, uh, that may vary. We could find something that's great condition, already a retail space, um, and similar to what we're gonna need. Um, we are gonna need things like, you know, signage. Um, so determining what the fit-up cost will take more time and it will depend on the facility. And that's one component of startup. Uh, there's also initial, when we determine what products we're gonna sell, filling the pipeline of our initial inventory, um, for the building. So, there'll be some startup costs for that. Once we have done that, uh, and there, and there might be some vetting of the, of the property we want to do as well. Once it, it were to become operational, our, our primary operating cost is, is gonna be the rental costs of the retail space. Um, it is Concord, we know that'll be a significant cost, um, but what that amount is, um, we'll find out. There'll be some utilities costs, um, there'll be some administrative costs, for example, a payment processing system to receive, um, payments electronically. Staffing is something we need to get our arms around more and we're gonna find out more about that on our site visit. I know that Shrewsbury has a retail manager. Um, you know, we, we are thinking about whether can we support this with our staff and students? Um, maybe, maybe there's a short term and a long term, but, so determining if there is staffing or not, um, is a question that, that we have, um, that we haven't answered yet. And then, one of the things that was stressed to, um, us from Shrewsbury was, um, don't think of this as you're running a business to generate a profit. Um, we're running a program to support students and, and to give them still skills and we certainly do want to make it an attractive product. So, you know, we do want to cover our variable costs, you know, the inventory that we pay for. Um, the students are getting experience there. Um, you know, it's, it's not a paid, um, labor. But it would be nice if we can offset some of the rental costs. So, um, we are gonna gather data, we're gonna, through our site visit, ask for some information on this to kind of quantify and get some examples. But, um, those are kind of what we see as the big picture of, of costs. And, um, again, we'll be flushing that out in more detail. Funding sources are short-term. We do have, um, a million dollars in circuit breaker carryover funds. When I think of short-term, I think more of the startup costs. Um, potential fundraising and donations to, to fray some of the startup costs. Um, longer-term, um, Angel, uh, talked about the number of students we have in district versus out of district. There's a significant cost avoidance we'd have. I mean, we have less than half of our students in district now, three out of seven. You know that out-of-district placements are not inexpensive. Um, we also have the potential, you know, if you're talking about a cohort of ten to fifteen students, for additional students tuitioning in, uh, non-resident tuitions, we have that revolving fund that we're currently charging forty-five thousand a student. I don't know what it would be for this program, we'd have to talk about that. But you potentially have that as an additional source of funding long-term. And so, those are the finances, um, of it, um, that go with kind of the programmatic, uh, rationale for wanting to do this, to keep students in district with a, with a great vocational opportunity for them. So, that's kind of where we are now.
Early days.
Yeah.
That's great. I mean, really, really exciting. I have a question on the RFP process. Like, how does that work? Like, you put an RFP out and anyone that's got retail space, do they have to just find it somewhere? Like, oh, look at what the schools are looking for. Like, how do you get the word out for people that might have retail space?
So, we are legally required to advertise it. What practically we'll do is we'll advertise it because we're supposed to, but we're not gonna have people respond to the advertisement. We'll look for properties and tell them-
And you'll tell them we have this process?
And, and so, it's, there's gonna be more work on us, like, that realtors are not-
They're not like, like combing the bridge for all of the notices that are in there, right? Like, I'm just like, how does that work? Okay. So, you just run the process, but you can also look for properties at the same time?
Yeah, we do. And, um, we have to look for, you know, suitable commercial space. In, you know, in Concord is the idea. And it'd be nice to be, you know, within a decent proximity of this building.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so we will, um, we'll be doing that and seeing what we can find out there. Uh, but, you know, I, I need to, we need to see if we can leave the RFP open, kind of, I don't know if you can leave it open on unlimited basis, but like, if we don't find it, we can repost it. Um, again, we can just kind of be reposting it because the nature of real estate, you know, there might be things that pop open that are great, or if we, we find a property and we have some issues with it or the price, we might pause. So, you know, we, we can, there's nothing that stops us from just running the RFP process, saying, we don't really have anything we want and then running it again, um, repeatedly.
And really, potentially, I mean, you could have kids that are currently out of district that, like you said, if you build it, they will come, that might say, oh gee, look at this opportunity that Concord has now, that they didn't have a couple of years ago and could actually come back in.
That's the hope.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And for example, you've got two students already tuitioned into pathways-
Yeah.
-that if we had a appropriate opportunity, the community that they're coming from may just tuition them in to launch, which may or may not happen now, but I think the more we build this out, the more likely it is.
It's great.
Yeah.
And it's not just for launch because, you know, there is, you know, vocational component to pathways as well. So, we would be looking to, you know, support both programs with space.
So, what would be another opportunity for kids that are currently in pathways to participate? Okay. That's great.
I know it's very speculative at this point, uh, but if you're in retail space, there might be a retail access expectation. Um, and yet, we, our school day, one eighty a year. Uh, would there be the possibility of a post-graduation employment opportunity for somebody?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Hmm.
Okay.
Great.
I think that's why Shrewsbury ended up with a retail manager to manage some of the off-school hours. And remember, we offer extended school year to all of these students. So, there's certainly opportunities there too.
And would you entertain the idea of, uh, shared space with, uh, a current retailer?
I'm open.
Okay.
We're open. I mean, I think one, one benefit. Do you want to get your worry in before?
Well, you can answer all these at the same time. So, I had the same question. Um, I really think you should contact the, uh, Concord. I assume this is gonna be in Concord because there's not a lot of retail opportunities in Carlisle. Just nothing wrong with Carlisle, you know? Um, uh, so yeah, it would be probably in Concord, so contacting the Chamber and then the Concord Economic Vitality Committee. Um, there's many other organizations, there's probably seen others-
The Business Partnership.
Yes, Concord Business Partnership. Because I think there might be some kind of store within a store kind of a thing because I'm afraid we're gonna have difficulty finding a real retail space right away. Like, you know, maybe it's gonna be, get it going, get it off the ground and just wait till something really good comes, becomes available. But that's just my two cents. Um, because I think people in the community would be excited for the opportunity. Would we be, are we currently tuitioning out students? And what, I think people would be interested to know what the number is. Did you tell us that and I just didn't read it?
Yes. Um, yes. We are sending more students out than in. And are you interested in the cost?
Yes, they definitely are.
There's a range between, um, thirty-six thousand and upwards, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand or more, depending. Yes. One other thing I want to mention that I think would be different for us as opposed, you know, if you do decide on a weekend to venture out to the Sugar Shack in Maple and Maine, is that those, um, the facilities that they're using are one-stop shops. So, they're the classroom in the back and then the storefront in the front. Because we've already made an investment and set up this, the classroom space here, we would not be abandoning that, which allows us to have probably a third of the square feet-
Yeah.
-um, that the other, um, programs that are doing well are using. So, that's one benefit, I guess.
And are both of those retail spaces, are they open seven days a week or six or?
Six.
Six.
Okay.
Mondays through Saturday.
Limited hours, I would think.
Yeah. Yeah, it is limited hours.
Yeah.
Uh, my question is, what is the product? Are you guys gonna be?
Isn't that the question?
That is the question. I mean, it, we don't want to do, we, we would get into Board of Health issues if they were, you know, of course, I, I've been thinking about this for a long time. I thought smoothies or, you know, baked goods, but anything cooking, food-related is just an added layer of bureaucracy that we don't want to deal with. So, we're looking at maybe Concord-centric things, maybe Concord Public and Concord Carlisle regional-centric items. I think the kids would also probably have a lot to say about what they would think so.
Hmm.
This, this might be a little far afield, but, uh, in the next week or so, the Concord Two-Fifty Marketing Group is gonna do a big launch. So, it might be wise to be in the room for that one.
Thank you.
And the, the numbers coming through this town, uh, in two years are pretty impressive.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Property maintenance? Since Concord has a need, I know the football program goes out and does a volunteer and they help clean up community, but it's something where you're not really looking for space and kind of save some money on that end and you still provide a year-round service. And I'll give them an opportunity, you know, into a field that, um, believe it or not, it's very lucrative, especially in the town, uh, Concord and Carlisle.
Good point. Thank you.
All my questions have been asked and answered. So, I just want to say, I think it's great. I think it's a really exciting program and I look forward to hearing more as it unfolds.
We can't wait to go visit.
Yeah.
I do have one more. Um, what do you think the critical mass of the number of students necessary would be in order to make a go of something? Or do you want this thing to be elastic enough so that it doesn't matter?
Given my experience, I mean, I would say we would need five.
Yeah, okay.
Five.
We're not gonna hold you to that, but, okay.
I would say five. Um, and I think that's manageable. You know, I, I do, just, I think it's manageable. Um, I also think it will grow exponentially in a short amount of time.
Yeah.
And also, and I look, I don't just, you know, I look to the, the pipeline at the high school, but I'm also looking down.
Yes.
And we have a significant number of students who are going to need this level of support as they come up through the grades. The pipeline now. Great. Thank you for considering.
It's excellent. Thank you. Any other questions on launch?
Exciting.
Very exciting. Um, and Angel also has her update for us, which you all have that. Uh, it's attached to the agenda, it's in the packet. So, we've had some time to sit with that. You know, and feel free to just share whatever you, you'd like to share with us on top of that.
Thank you. Okay. Um, so yeah, I wanted to, the last time, I think it was, I was three months in when I, when I came, if that's right. Um, so it's been six to nine months, which is flying by. Um, so, I'll talk a little bit about that at a high level and then if you have questions, you can, um, you can certainly ask away. Um, you know, one thing that I, you've got the best laid plans in an entry plan. You know, when you, when I'm, was working on the entry plan in the spring, I, I don't think that I realized at the time how fluid and flexible that has to be because urgent issues arise, can arise on a, you know, hourly, daily basis and they need attention and they need flexibility and they need, um, attention right away. So, I think that, um, you know, being able to maintain the, the vision that I had for my entry plan while also attending to issues as they arise, um, has been something that I, that I probably should have anticipated, but, you know, I guess you live and learn. So, you know, as I've approached this, I think, you know, I have prioritized and will likely continue prioritizing because I think it's just important, um, important for any leader in any role. You know, when you're coming into something new, of course, you know, having been in the district for a number of years, I did have ideas and I had, you know, my thoughts about how things were going. But really, I've approached this, you know, with the goal of seeking to understand the current situation of the Office of Student Services. Everything from the dynamics within my team, to within programs, to within schools, um, to within students. Um, and I really think that, you know, looking at, you know, all of the adults and, you know, faculty and staff members who support the work of the Office of Student Services, I have really been engaging them in conversations about, you know, do you like working here? How's it going? You know, do you feel like you are working to your strengths or how can I support you? Um, you know, what are some things that you've wanted to change for a long time? Or what are some things that you think are going swimmingly that, you know, you don't think that we should make a move on right away? So, that, that trying to, you know, be open and listen and really seek authentic perspectives on the current State of the Union, um, has been very powerful. Not coming in like I already know, you know, what the issues are or what the dynamics are really, you know, because you could, you hear, I've worked in the district for a number of years. So, I've interacted with folks, but on a different level. So, really, you know, hearing from them about what the experience has been like, um, so that I can figure out how we can overcome some of those challenges and, and really find efficiencies and make people feel like they're coming to the work every day and giving what they have to give and getting that, that positive feedback that we need to do this work that can be really hard at times. Um, another aspect to how I approach the work is really, um, been focusing not just on relationship building, but on a very forward-facing, hands-on, in-the-trenches type of way. It's been critical to visit programs, to meet the various, you know, we've got, we've got a huge team of folks. We've got assistants, we have, you know, nurses, we've got a really fantastic team of folks, ABA assistant therapists who support, um, the Office of Student Services. And it's really important that I speak with them and, you know, visit them while they're on the job and meet the students who they're servicing and figure out, you know, work with the school leadership to say, you know, how can I help? What are you, what are you struggling with? What's going really well? Um, and I've been really pleased that despite the paperwork and protocol and policies that, you know, so much of special education and student services is bound by laws and regulations that I've really struggled at times, but been able to get to a place, I would say now, where I have that balance of there's the, the policies and procedures, but then there's also the human, you know, aspect of, and the student focus work that we have to do. So, um, I have really been lucky that I've been welcomed by the parents, the staff, the, um, other members of the administration, um, into those relationships and partnerships. So, that's been great. Um, another piece that I've been focusing on are policies and procedures. I think that are, early on in my time here, we, um, had the opportunity to engage in the onsite portion of the tiered focus monitoring, um, visits from the state, checking out our compliance and how well we were adhering to laws and regulations, um, which it was fantastic to hear that there were no findings and that we weren't compliant and the work was great and that we were creating a climate that was warm and welcoming for students. But I'm also looking carefully at trends around, you know, who are the students that we're retaining in district? What is the student performance data telling us of how our students, um, with disabilities are doing? How are they performing? Um, which students, looking for trends and cohorts around students who we are outplacing as opposed to students who we are servicing really well within our current programmings? And then using that information to figure out what I need to focus on for the next eighteen months because it, if you focus on the right things, it comes, becomes pretty clear and obvious. Um, so, looking at, uh, goals for the next eighteen months, um- So looking at, uh, goals for the next eighteen months, um, I would still say, you know, beyond, you know, this, this work that we're interested, that I'm interested in doing with the transition, launch pathways, programs, that aspect, I would really like to, and Debbie does such a wonderful job of putting together this document highlighting the continuum of services. And it's wonderful. I would really love to focus, um, in on our social, emotional and behavioral programs to make sure that they are synced up in our approach so that it's a easier and smoother transition as they go through the grades. I also have noticed, um, that most, that our students, um, in certain instances may need a higher level of support than partial inclusion. So looking to figure out how we can expand our toolbox and repertoire and level of service that we're offering because social, emotional, um, and behavioral needs of students can ebb and flow over time. It's not like as if, you know, I am diagnosed with a hearing loss that's going to stay a hearing loss, you know, as I go through the grades. Um, social, emotional, behavioral can be a little bit more challenging because it can, can ebb and flow. So, um, I would like to focus on getting the, those programs in a room together to really talk about how we can strengthen and support as, you know, our programs are intended to support whoever comes through the door. And if we're noticing that, you know, we're having students who need more support in the social, emotional realm, I would like to make sure that we are equipped and prepared to meet those. Am I talking too fast? Nope. So again, I, these, these needs are coming to me from, um, from the students themselves. And, you know, when I'm visiting the schools and working with the teams at each school, this is coming from them. So it's something that we're all on the same page with, needing more of a toolbox for and needing some more training and needing to be more synced up so that we're using a common approach. So strengthening current programs, I also have found, which has been a little overwhelming, I think, because the work that we do has been so wonderful. We have a ton of, um, community partners and organizations that want to partner with us and engage with us, and it's a lot. So I would really like to, to, when I get to a place, maybe this summer or maybe sooner, where I can really think and reflect on, you know, what partnerships do we need? What would, you know, being really mindful and plan, planful about relationships with local agencies and organizations, so that moving forward, I can be a, and my office can be a liaison between community-based resources and, um, and our families. You know, one area I'll just anecdotally talk about because it's come up recently in the past couple of days. Parents are requesting support, um, with navigating the state's, uh, process for, you know, filing paperwork, for, for example, applying for developmental disabilities or autism resources, home-based care. There's a ton of paperwork involved. Um, and once you get through that paperwork process and you have those connections, um, a whole world of home-based and quality-of-life resources open up to families in various situations. So I thought that would be a great thing for us to, you know. So down the line, that would be one example of, you know, making sure that we're not partnering for the sake of partnering, but we're hearing from the families of a need and making sure that we're making good match. Strategic planning, again, having written school improvement plans aligned to, um, the district's, um, strategic plan was really valuable for me. So looking at how the Office of Student Services specifically moving forward can align our work with the work of the strategic plan is something I'm excited about. Okay, that's question one. Okay, so I talked about programs I want to, um, make adjustments to. I also, um, want to let you know that, you know, over the past year, last year, I think, it was a two-year process, we were able to train, I would say, between eight and ten educators, um, to receive, uh, Wilson certification. I have between seven and eight additional teachers just at one school, so multiply that, who are also interested in going through the training. The budget that I had submitted for the Office of Student Services is reflective of the need to provide that additional training. There are no other specific programs at this time that I'm looking to implement in any of the age groups. I think that's enough to start. Again, I, one way that I feel like you can support me and, uh, set me up for success is to see what I see. When I think about when I was in school, um, we did not have, um, a robust number and level of programs that we are offering. It's very different. And I think unless you see the work that we're doing on a daily basis, it's really hard to appreciate the really wide range of student needs that we are meeting within our district. And I think, um, it would make you very proud. So that would, I would feel supported.
That was a pitch for the tour.
The tour, I mean, how you, I'm coming on the tour.
We're going.
I'm just saying, I'm coming. I mean, for, you know, to know the work that we're doing, you know, to see the, it's, it's more than just, it's small interactions. It's not, it's numbers on it. It's numbers, and our numbers are great, but it's also, you know, those small moments and to just see the, the work that we're doing with students is, is incredible. And it took me reflecting on these questions to actually appreciate the work. I mean, we're doing really phenomenal work. Okay, so let's talk about, um, addressing the needs of dyslexia and literacy in general. So again, like any, you know, what special education is specialized instruction that's designed uniquely for each learner, and that's no different for dyslexia. So, you know, I think the work that, um, Kristen's office has been doing around, you know, our, rolling out our NTSS system, and we spent most of last year just focusing on literacy and reading, we have gotten more confident, I think, and, um, the early identification and qualification for services is at a level that we've, is at a wonderful level that I think has taken years to get to, but I think it's fantastic. At another date, if you'd like me to share those numbers for who's qualifying under what category, you can see the number of students qualifying under specific learning disability going, ticking up the past couple of years. So I think that's promising. Um, so again, the early identification qualification then leads to the specially-designed instruction. For dyslexia, you know, a couple of programs I had talked about, um, there are multisensory instructional approaches, things like Wilson Reading Program or Gillingham, um, Naturally Project Read, Visualizing and Verbalizing. It really depends on the student's profile. I think, you know, sometimes you hear a couple of names, but, you know, for a special educator, it's really important that you take the whole student's profile into consideration. Because if I might be a student who, you know, has dyslexia, but my working memory might make, you know, something like a Wilson difficult to do. So we really have to have a wide and broad range of tools that we are using. Assistive technology needs are something that we discuss. Uh, and assistive technology could be everything from a pencil grip. I don't want you to go to text-to-speech in your mind. Assistive and adaptive technology are discussed at every team meeting. And again, along with the unique needs of each student.
Well, it's funny, when you said to, you know, you want to see our students in action, you look at like tonight. We had students that started with us tonight. You know, we had unified track suit and unified basketball students with us a few weeks ago. And I think until you see those students in action, it is hard to really visualize our program. So I do think that is an important piece to really see all these programs that we have built out here because it is impressive. And you can see it on the paper. You can see, you know, all the colors of all the different programs we have. But when you see them really in action, then you see all the work and, and the financial investment we've made in those programs, so.
Yeah, I'll echo that. It's interesting because like Tracy, you know, I've been on the committee enough time now that I've seen that, you know, document enough times. But I do, I do agree that this is sort of the first year for me that you get more of a 3D picture of what these programs really are. It's one thing to sort of conceptually and intellectually kind of understand them, but I appreciate, um, your intention to, to give us more, um, more of a 3D picture of that because it, it is helpful. And, and building out these programs has obviously been a joint effort between the two of you. I mean, I, and I, I've known that since you've arrived and, um, and, you know, the fact that we've come this far and yet we continue to iterate and innovate, I think speaks, um, to your capabilities in this role and your team and everyone else. So, um, thank you for that level of detail.
Yeah, I agree. I, I love that, um, I appreciated everything that you've talked about. I think it's really, I'd love to go on a tour. I'd love to see it, um, in all the different schools and settings. I think it's really, um, wonderful that at a time when we were asking you all these questions about, you know, okay, so what do you know now, six months in, and where are you headed? You're already presenting. You lead with a, a big new program that you're trying to launch. I think that's awesome. So, so.
Launch, launch, right?
And a launch, launch. Yeah. So, yeah, I think it's really exciting and I, I think from a, you know, obviously a big part of our job is fiduciary and, and, and a lot of this costs money but saves more. And so on so many levels, on the human level, on the, you know, budgetary level, um, it makes a lot of sense to make these kinds of investments. So, and to echo Alexa, I love the like that you're trying to put a human base on it. It's not just numbers on a page. It's not just three students here, four out. You know, it's, these are people and it's really easy to lose sight of that. So, um, appreciate it.
And it's not lost on me. I mean, we, I kind of, we're, the goal of this is not to make money necessary for, for a launch?
No, 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 it could.
Well, I mean, yeah.
We might have already had an idea of where we might do it and there was a lot of foot traffic. When we looked at it, we might actually make money. If we ended up here, we might actually make money.
Also, also I think this town, like I think Cindy used to this too, but like this, I feel like this town would be so like positive, really responsive.
Yeah, yeah, agreed. The visibility is so, like, important and meaningful, so.
Yeah.
You only made brief reference to documentation, compliance and the struggle involved. Can you speak a little bit to how you resource both at Ripley and, uh, Building Based in terms of keeping up with, with that? Because it's not, it's not small, I know.
No, it's not small. And I have to say, Bob has been my right hand as far as the money goes. But I have, oh, I have wonderful coordinators at each level. So we have an elementary coordinator, middle, high school. We have someone, um, Frances Wolf is the assistant director. So between all of us, we meet together weekly. And everyone's running point on the various responsibilities. But when it comes to, you know, state reporting and the money, Bob and I work closely on that and check one another. I would say it, we were deep into it, especially as part of the tiered focus monitoring. But every step of the way, we've gotten in our interactions with the state and have been positive and you're doing a great job. And, um, we were awarded a grant to help with rollout of the new implementation of the IEP. So there's, you know.
Could I ask that question?
Yeah. So we're following along. Thank you.
I have a question about, uh, you were speaking, um, to the dyslexia. And, um, I know, I don't know if it's, is it Massachusetts, did they make it official now that the kids need to be tested? I know for a while, uh, my youngest is dyslexic, so I know for a while it was a whole, you know, they weren't testing and now it's mandatory, um, or something like that. Not really up on all that. But, um, my question is for the, I just know at Carlisle, we have, right, everybody's getting tested early. But what about the, like, those are the kids now. What about the kids who have been in school and are in seventh grade now and weren't tested? Or the kids who moved from out of state and come in in middle school, um, and are dyslexic? What, do you guys have a, you know, are you, are you testing the older kids who didn't get the testing?
So the law says we have to do the younger students. So we are, and that's all students, not just students on IEP. So if a student who's been diagnosed with dyslexia moves in, in sixth grade?
So that's what I'm saying, like this kid who, you know, a kid who comes from any other state out of, that might not test, comes in and like, just, it's not a, it's not an example of dyslexia, but there was another, in seventh grade, a kid moved from California who definitely needed an IEP, which they had no, like, they were like, what? We could get that? I'm like, yes.
Yeah, yep.
And, um, so I just, like, I wonder about that. Like, what do you do about the kids who, right, have maybe never been diagnosed from where they were? Or just somehow, like, my own kid was diagnosed, but nobody sort of said it. And so like in fourth grade, the teachers are, they're like, he's dyslexic. I'm like, how do you not know this? Like, we found this out in kindergarten.
Right.
Like, why don't you know that he's dyslexic now in fourth grade? So just that kind of stuff. Because some of them, I know just personally, my own son, he's got a huge working memory. So, and he has all these coping skills. So people are like, I didn't know he was dyslexic. I'm like, just because he's presenting well, doesn't mean, like, now because he's in eighth grade, like, it's hard for him to read him. He can pop, you know, you read to him, he can tell you everything that happened, but the reading itself and like spelling is still really hard. So I just, like, I worry about those kids who, because there's definitely dyslexic kids who can compensate and fall through the cracks.
A hundred percent. So I would say, you know, any child who moves in who we suspect that we have a disability, who we suspect has a disability, we have an obligation to test them. So if, and there are also some, you know, disabilities that emerge later on. You know, they don't, may not show up until, not just dyslexia, but, you know, other things related to mental health are. So anytime that we suspect there's a disability, we have an obligation to evaluate.
You know, in the Concord schools and up through CC, we're doing star reading with every child, kindergarten through grade ten.
Okay.
So we're hoping we, they don't fall through our cracks. Um, and we assess everyone who moves in for sure, to be sure that.
We know we're.
We know where their data is at. Yeah.
Thank you.
Great.
Well, I just have a question about transitioning to the new IEP.
Yeah.
Something for, for, for twenty twenty-four?
Correct.
Okay. So you have to do that, right?
Yes. Yes.
So is there some transition coming in this spring? Like, do you want to work in the summer or?
So there's two, two parts. I'm glad you asked. So there's two parts. There's the, I've heard this used earlier, she said, the meat and potatoes of the, of the IEP, sort of the structure. And then, so that piece, we've all, my team has been trained on, we've done a train, the trainer training. The piece that we're trying, that we're in the process of negotiating right now is our online platform, specific training. We use Aspen. And Aspen has recently offer, opened up a series of trainings. There was a feeding frenzy, so despite the fact that we had put in for the first day, we were pushed off until March. So once we ourselves feel like we have, you know, a confident use of Aspen with relation to the new IEP, we'll be ready to roll.
I'm just smiling because I work in a school. My boss, I don't listen. Everybody thinks it's really easy.
No. No, it's not. Um, so up until this point also, um, I have access to the new IEP side of Aspen. So we've been asked by the developers to give feedback on, you know, so we have a long list of errors and mistakes and troubleshooting.
I just want people to know it's, it's a lot of, you know, technology as well as people as well as technology.
It's almost more the technology because, you know, I, I think that the, the changes are, you know, certainly more student-centered and user-friendly, but it's going from the technical piece of, you know, starting the workflow and how you find, it's, it's that part that we're all a little bit more worried about because depending on what vendor you were using for, to manage, you know, the online side, we're in very different places over the past year with, and just trying to troubleshoot and make it, make it work. So.
What summers are for?
This is what summers are for. That's right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me.
No. Great. Well, that was a great update. Another great update by Angel and her, her new role, which I feel like you've been in this role forever now. I mean, it really feels like it's seamless. So thank you for that. All right. We will move on to the mid-year update of the superintendent's goal. So you also have that attached on to the agenda, was in the packet. Lori's just going to give a verbal update of her goals at this point.
Yeah, and I think I'll highlight, I, actually, as I looked these over and prepared for tonight, I realized you've had a lot of updates along the way. And I might highlight ones that maybe we haven't spent as much time talking about. So as I go through the student learning goals, you've obviously heard MCAS and we're excited by the progress that we've made. We have a goal still of ten percent growth to, to gain. I've been very active in the early literacy discussions and I'll just leave you dangling with it. We're going to bring you a big early literacy presentation in late February. Some more to come on that and the work we're doing to synchronize across schools, really identify the evidence-based pieces and tighten up a little bit in how we're packaging that and present, especially in the communication of it. tighten up a little bit in how we're packaging that and present, especially in the communication of it. Some more to come on that. And in terms of really looking at deeper learning and success of all, deeper learning continues to come out and work with the middle and high schools. They're actually at the high school tomorrow and at the middle school next week. And I've been attending most of those opportunities directly, which has just been great for me to feel close to teaching and learning. We actually updated and rolled out the district curriculum accommodation plan last week. So that's out with the staff, reminding them of all the accommodations that are required within regular education and things that we need to do to be meeting children where they're at regardless, without paperwork and without all the processes. And that really is part of how specialized instruction becomes what special it is. In terms of looking at prioritizing wellbeing, I think I couldn't have brought you a better commercial for responsive classroom than I did tonight. So we'll talk, you know, how successful that's been at the elementary schools as we continue to make progress rolling that out to everyone. And a same similar comment on the high school and the support we've given to the schedule rollout and the really early success we've seen there, probably exceeding our expectations, to be honest. Angel did a thorough job there. I spent a lot of time, you know, checking in and supporting and hearing what's happening with programs and students and working with Angel on all the things that are happening out in the schools as well as all the administrators. And I promise you that walk through the programs and out in schools will be really rewarding. In terms of the shelter, we are getting ready now, starting to identify the incoming kindergarteners. We're still working on the preschool aspect. So a few updates there. We have about five kids enrolled here. We have a list of referrals, another five or six students deep. We're struggling to fill the halftime preschool position that we want to put in over here. So we reposted it again yesterday, trying to see if we could recruit. We're going to have to figure something out if the right candidate doesn't come on. So Angel and I agreed that this week we would see where we were and by next week we could have to go to something more creative. Don't ask me what that is yet.
So it's a halftime preschool.
Halftime.
It's certified in both special ed and regular ed?
They get certified in early childhood. Special needs.
Okay.
Is, I think we also, probably why the pool is small is we also stress the ELL need that we have there because of the shelter. So perhaps the posting needs to get reworked. That may be a little piece of it, the unicorn of early childhood.
Time to hire.
It's a very, yeah, anyway, it's really hard. So we are obviously supporting children also through the play space over there. Andrea, the family coordinator is starting to get the list together. We're right now identifying 13 four-year-olds who will be ready for kindergarten in the fall. And have decided to start enrolling them in March with the assumption that they're fairly likely to still be here. And then there's another 14 or so three-year-olds behind them that'll turn four and on and on. So we're starting to think forward into next year. I think this year's been just a really successful learning curve, not solely a linear learning curve, but a successful learning curve. And as we have readiness for what the needs will continue to be and watching the children progress. And I continue to stay very engaged with all the state agencies and my colleagues as the state navigates their next steps in the process of managing and supporting the migrant families. In terms of our work in anti-racism and DEIB, we've all been supporting the restorative justice initiative and the restorative circles have become far more normalized throughout our schools in the last five months as we initiated that this summer. Obviously Andrew and I connect quite a bit and I'm aware and connect, supporting his strategic plan either firsthand or behind the scenes. I'm now serving on the MASSS committee as well as the DESI state level committee, which has just been really great connections to hear what other places are doing. Obviously, I try to offer feedback from what we're learning, but it's mutual. So that's been fantastic. And just continuing to support the MEKO program and all the ebbs and flows of MEKO, the MEKO 2.0 initiatives, which is really the anti-racism work that we're already pretty well underway with and just being really collaborative with all my, all the other districts. I think budget-wise, you're front and center to that. So I won't spend much time on that. And then just the last piece that I did want to spend a few minutes on is the new middle school. We don't talk about it that much here anymore because it's off running under the building committee. And there's a lot that I do, that I just wanted to note while we're talking about my goals. I have two construction meetings every Tuesday. One at nine AM with the leadership of the design team, the OPM. Gail Dowd, who's a real, become a real pivotal point person from the town, who's now designated from the town manager's office, trying to stay synced up with the leadership level, which also means we're syncing up with how and what we're working on with the general contractor and what issues might have come up and sort of that prep meeting. So that when we all meet together with the general contractor present at one o'clock in the trailer every Tuesday, we're all on the same page and we hear what they're working on. And I mean, the nuts and bolts of construction. I'm listening for delays and I'm listening for things like that. There's a lot I don't understand, of course, but there's people in the room that do. And then just talking more on the impacts to the school, like now with FFNE sort of becoming the priority so that we can start to get bids out. That's where the teaching and learning, Justin Cameron started a committee this week of teachers that are going to be the transitional committee to the new school. So I was over there yesterday afternoon, starting to work with them. Obviously the building itself is going to have a lot to do with the move and settling in and next year being a world in two places, three places. How are we going to manage, manage all of that? So, you know, there's this undercurrent of just really ongoing, very busy work that I'm very engaged in. Bob's very engaged and he's on the technical committee of the PO process that when Courtney and Alexa come to the monthly meetings have already all been vetted for change orders and all of that. So it just seems noteworthy that there's, it's become almost invisible, which I think is good news because we're not having to bring you big issues. But just to, to stress that there's still a lot going on there, which sounds obvious, but seems important to name every now and then.
I agree.
And super exciting to watch that building go up and start to take form. And once we can get inside and walk around and we remain on schedule, on budget. And that doesn't mean that's linear either, but with some push and pulls, we're staying on track and really a very successful project overall to date. So.
At our last building meeting, we learned we're 26%
Yeah.
Eight, I think was the number.
Oh.
Yeah.
Looking really good.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
It was interesting.
You haven't had issues with extreme cold. What about water?
They have managed the water very successfully. I would say we had a little bit of learning curve back in the summer when those torrential ones came through. And they figured it out early, adjusting to what they saw for rainfall. And they've been very successful ever since because to your point, honestly, that's been the biggest issue of this whole project is managing the amount of water and rain.
So far, so good.
So far, so good.
Thank you.
Great. Any questions, comments?
I just had a question. When, when the new middle school is built, what's going on with the old building?
Yeah. So Sandburn is going to be demolished and we're putting fields there. Peabody, somewhere in the mix here, the school committee is going to reappoint that back to the town of Concord. And then they're going to have to figure out what to do with it.
They haven't started.
No, they have not. Yeah. Good question, Karen.
There was a value put on it some time ago. I don't know if it was
10 million?
11, I think.
Almost 12, yeah.
Yeah. But who knows?
Two years ago though, so it's changed. I guess my last comment on my goals, maybe it seems worth saying out loud. This has been probably a year I feel like I've been able to stay on track with them more than probably since pre-pandemic. That doesn't mean there's like nothing else going on. It just means there's a lot of other supports happening. I think all these programs have been really helpful and you know, having a lot of other supports to children. It's just the more I reviewed them at trip prepare, I'm like, wow, I feel like I've been really able to stay close to them and not get totally diverted. Somebody knock on wood because something will happen tomorrow that I'm saying this out loud, but been able to really keep coming back to them regardless of whatever else is happening. And I think that's just been really, really hard the last few years. So perhaps that's a good sign of the state of the union, right?
Definitely.
I'm able to do that.
Definitely. Great. Great. All right. So we will now transition to our goals. Those you have in your packet, they're attached to the agenda for anyone listening at home. And I was thinking like last year we had a goal document and we tracked everything. I was hoping this could be more of an interactive discussion and then we can put together kind of where we're at and what do we still need to see? So we're just going to go through one by one. We're going to go start with goal number one, which is the joint school committee will evaluate student success to ensure that the district commitments yield the student achievement, growth and success articulated in the five-year strategic plan. So I was thinking about that one. I'm like, okay, where are we at in this? What have we done? What have we seen? We have seen a lot of data so far. Kristen presented the MCAS to us in November. We saw some information on math in December. We've seen, we will be seeing the differentiation at the high school at our next meeting. And then literacy will follow kind of the end of, I think, February, we have that slated for. So we've talked a lot about mental health. But just how do we feel we're doing on this? Is there anything else we'd like to see? We've been through report requests, but if there's anything else that you have questions on, or how do you think we're doing? I would love to hear some feedback because these are definitely our goals. So we should be talking about them in public.
Just about goal one.
Goal one. We're gonna start with goal one.
Well, so I know we have, we identified six report requests that intersected with that goal. And we've received a great deal of the information already. We've identified report request number nine, which was Director of Student Services goals. We've heard about middle school math and math in general. We've heard about the K-8 math curriculum, the big piece remaining, which the superintendent just addressed would be the report request we had around literacy. So, you know, I view this as, you know, us keeping that commitment. I don't know if this is the time to do that, but I'm also interested to sort of discuss in this discussion agenda item, how we feel overall about the report requests and how they serve our ability to deliver the goals that we, that we've identified. You know, we, we have had varying concerns and conversations about working with the administration to extract the data that we want. The report requests were kind of designed to do that because they're so specific. So I, I just, that can be sort of overarching in the conversation as well, but I do, I'm just curious to know the feedback from you all. Do you feel like that has improved what we're taking from the administration? Has it remained the same? Sort of curious if anyone has.